So we, like many Parks and Recreation Agencies across the country, face an uncertain future as the way to normal is definitely changing each day. When asked our Parks and Recreation Facility Director, I simply answer, "Yes, of the number of individuals that we serve, the impact that we have on lives every day, and the importance that we add to the health and wellness of our community." So today, the purpose of this retreat is to look at where we've been and to identify where we want to go as one commission, as one team. Today, we'll start off with building a stronger foundation for our board to continue to do the great work by having our attorney, Mr. Lawrence Flynn, to present to the Board Board Governance. This gives you the opportunity to refresh some of those things that you've already been exposed to, and then also how we move forward as an agency to accomplish the many goals that we have before us. And then we will be introduced to youth sports tourism. I'm excited about this presentation. We do feel, as a county, that we have many opportunities to serve as a hub for sports, not only youth sports, but adult sports as well. So today, we'll be carrying some of the things that we've been in terms of what we've been able to bring, but also what we think we need in order to bring even more. And then lastly, we will close out with our accomplishments over the last past fiscal year, as well as how we have been able to survive during COVID-19. And then Monday, we will move into the final part of our retreat, where we will focus on capital improvement projects and our operating budget as we identify strategies to move forward. So with that, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce Mr. Lawrence Flynn, and I'll know him, to give him his background, as we work with the first part of our retreat. Chairman, in the opinion, are there any words that you would like to say?
Yeah, thank you very much for putting this on. I know we've been trying to put this together for quite a while, so congratulations to everybody for making this happen. It's nice. I think this is the first time I've sat in the middle of this table since I became chairman, so it's good to be there all together. I'm going to plastic and get my actual precautions. So thank you very much, like I said, and let's record our productive day. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Flynn?
All right, there we are. I'm going to take this down because I like to walk around a little bit. I'll walk over towards y'all. I'll pull my mask back. I'm Lawrence Flynn. I'm an attorney with the Pope Flynn Law Firm here in Columbia. With me today, I've got Sarah Weathers, my associate and key need on this straight here, to kind of walk through this discussion. She pulled together some information that I think will be fairly helpful as we go through the discussion today. So not only does it have the presentation materials that I put together that you'll have here as background, it also has a copy of the Enabling Legislation of the District. And we'll talk about what that Enabling Legislation is and why that's important. Then it also has a series of draft policy proposals working with staff over the last couple of months to pull together, which I think are also part of the discussion we're going to get into today about what policies are probably necessary for the organization to continue the process of moving forward. So I'll say that we are here in a board retreat, and my goal is to foster as much discussion as we possibly can because I don't think as board members and everyone is still relatively new to this process, most of the staff, or at least most of the executive staff, is new. And so, look, he and I have had some of these conversations in the last year, but I'm not really sure that the Board has kind of got a wholesome understanding of what it is to be a special purpose district. I want to know if staff has that knowledge either. So I'll say, on the front end, I have a tendency to run off with them out, and I've got two hours otherwise given to me. If we need to take a break, let's take a break. If I say something that doesn't make sense, I'll repeat it and see if I can say it in a way that does make sense. If you have a question, ask it because I think this stuff is... I do it a lot. There's lots of special purpose districts all over the state. It's intuitive to me because I live it every single day, but a lot of this stuff is actually not intuitive. You think, man, why did it happen like this? Why are we doing things this way? And there is a history to it. And the good news is, I was a history major as an undergrad, and since I wanted to actually make some money in life, it was awesome. But I get to tell a history lesson here today too. So that actually, I think, is really helpful for purposes of helping understand how you've gotten to where you are today, what your purpose is as Commissioner, what your purpose is as staff, what the great kind of benefit of special purpose districts are in the general setting. And I think from that, my goal is, as we get out of this portion of the board retreat, it'll help with the process for the discussion on Monday if you start talking about capital planning. Because at the end of the day, that is apparently what I do. I'm a bond lawyer by trade, which is just a fancy name for a lawyer that helps people borrow money. And the capital planning, because you are a governmental body, the trims and capital facilities is with your tax debts. And so, if we start thinking through all of the assets and facilities, because, you know, if you start looking at the size of this county, you start looking at the assets that you had, start thinking about the fact that you've been in existence for 50 some odd years, that costs money. There are legitimate big dollars that are associated with running this organization. And it's not something that you can just kind of put it on a shelf. These are depreciating assets. These are staff that, you know, are trying to take care of their family. And so, those costs are going to continue to escalate. And we still have to figure out how, you know, we be strategic about where our capital is deployed, how we spend it, and what new projects to have. So that would be brandy discussion on Monday. I will not be here for that portion of it, but there may be some... A little bit of overlap, just to kind of understand that, and then we'll probably follow it back up with a subsequent discussion, probably at a board meeting at some point in the next few years, start talking about how we actually issue bonds or are working to increase tax levy authorization. With that, my goal is not to rely on slides too much, but I do actually think this helps for purposes of being able to get through the discussion. So y'all may have to help me here. How do I click, go hunch, where do I point?
The arrow to the right.
Arrow to the right. Got it. All right, so that one switched. Are these switching too to someone switch with me?
Perfect.
All right, so as I said, we're going to talk about history first and foremost because I think with respect to special purpose districts, the important consideration that you really need to think through is how you're created. And so, the history lesson, and this goes back way far. This like goes back to the start of local government as just a general theory. In South Carolina, we operate now under the 1895 Constitution. So there's, you know, we've got federal constitution, then all the states, obviously, but, you know, this greater state structure itself, people leaving, making sure the states have responsibilities. And so, we've had per constitutional commission. The most recent constitutional commission in South Carolina was in 1895. That is a constitution that we operate under. 1895 Constitution that basically recognized several forms of government. You had state, you had cities, so municipalities that had broad power to do lots of things. You had counties which were considered agencies of the state, basically acting on behalf of the state to implement and roll out projects they had. And then you had special purpose districts that kind of came about as a result of the limitations of counties. And, you know, a lot of times, what you hear, especially old timers, when they start talking about counties that didn't have very many powers, you know, the county supervisor or county administrators, we call them the road supervisor, is because really, the only power counties had until March 7th, 1973, was the authorization to pave roads. They had some limited policing powers, compared to poppers, people that died without income. The responsibility was paving roads in state, which meant that counties didn't have fire, you know, power to provide fire service. They didn't have the ability to provide super service. They didn't have the ability to provide water service. Obviously, they didn't have the ability to provide recreation. And so, understanding that as the baseline, because this inherent conflict that has gone on with this organization for a long time, and that's not just paying lip service to it. There, there's a real conflict. There have been lawsuits between this organization and the county. There's still some approval oversight that's still happening as a result of your relationship with the county. Because obviously, the legislative delegation comes into that discussion as well. All of that comes into play through this. And so, because the county didn't have the ability to provide recreation services, what would happen is, is you would find areas of the state where certain necessary services were. So you had the city of Columbia, which as a city, had the ability to do water, sewer, fire, police, recreation. That's the reason that the rural service area doesn't include outside the incorporated limits of the city of Columbia. Because the city had that power under the 1895 Constitution. The county did not. And so, what happened was, and this is the essence of the way that our state operated for a really, really long time, is when you needed to have social services deployed in a particular area, you would call your local senator, who was the most powerful person in your particular county, and they would say, hey, we need to be able to do recreation services in the personal road area. Well, that's not in incorporated city of Columbia. We need baseball facilities, or we need basketball facilities, or we need tennis facilities. And let's, in the legislative delegation, generally acting through the senator, would say, yeah, we put a line item appropriation in from the state budget. We create a one-all organization. We pass it with a bunch of our buddies. That's the reason that it's appointed by the governor upon the presidential list. And then they had kind of this consortium that they could control, put assets on the ground in their various communities. And then they got to appoint the commissioners to be able to make decisions as to how they rolled out their assets. And that's not unique to you. There's like 800 some odd special purpose districts operating in South Carolina today. If you go up to Spartanburg County or Greenville County, that's probably the place where there's the most of them. And the reason for that, is you can kind of see it a little bit more strategically up there. You have, you know, the city of Spartanburg, you have the city of Greenville. But in Spartanburg County, they have 37 independently operated fire districts. Well, that includes the city of Spartanburg. But that's 37 independently operated special districts because what they had, they had a whole bunch of mill villages. And so, the mill villages typically popped up around areas that were beside string, the river, tributaries, because they needed to discharge into the river. Well, they also had a need for fire service, or sewer service, or water service. And the county couldn't do it, so they created these independent districts. So you have 37 fire districts still operating in Spartanburg. Seven water districts operating in Spartanburg. There's a regional sewer provider, same thing in Greenville. But Greenville has the same problem going on with their fire. They actually had fire and sewer, because it's kind of across the board. There are not a lot of independent recreation districts. You've got the Lexington County Department of Recreation and Aging, which I don't even know what aging is as a policy. Charleston County has a large recreation district, and obviously, you do as well. But another area of recreation just simply was kind of disregarded in some of those outstanding counties that were largely done by the city. It could be done by the city outside their municipal boundaries by some. So I say all that to give you the background as to how you were created, and that was done by Act 873 of 1960. And what you'll see is, in the packet of information that I gave you today, what is it, behind tab one? Behind tab eight? There is a list of your statutory enabling legislation.
Oh, that's me.
Sorry, there. There's a list of your statutory enabling legislation, which is this act, Act 873 of 1960. And then through time, it gives you your new powers. You fill them in, and over and over and over and over again. So 16 times that we can find in going back through the books of statutory changes through the years. So the interesting thing about a special purpose district is you are what's considered a Dillon's Rule entity, as opposed to a home rule. So you've probably heard that term home rule before. And cities have home rule powers. Home rule means that you have the authorization to rule from home, meaning that you have all of those powers that are not otherwise prohibited by the constitution or the legislature. So if you're a city, you can provide fire service, you can provide recreation services, you can write tickets, you can institute special fees, you can sell property, you can buy property. You can basically do anything you want, so long as it's not prohibited. For example, a city can't go out and create its own traffic laws. That's obviously preempted by the state. The state dictates what municipal speed limits are. They have the state law blue ticket book. You can call speeding, you write it on a state ticket. It can process locally, but it's done on the state board. That is the loan, the kind of the example of how the state's restricted. As a special purpose district, you don't have home rule powers. You have what's known as Dillon's Rule powers, which means that you are the creature of statute. And that means that you only have those powers that are expressly provided to you by the legislature. So if it's not written in the enabling legislation that created this organization, you don't have that power. And that's an important thing to remember because folks will say, you know, we now have home rule in South Carolina. And you can argue whether or not we actually have home rule checks on fiscal autonomy, tax levy, and all kinds of things. But as a special purpose district, and what I particularly refer to as the redheaded stepchild of local government, you are limited to what you can do. And that's an important consideration because as we start looking at this, I mean, if we're going to talk about your enabling legislation, what does this? And then we're also going to talk about general legislation. And why does that, why does that import? Well, the reason is, is because, I talked about history lesson. Counties in, under the Home Rule Act amendments, our new article tenement was enacted in 1973, actually, March 7th, 1973, basically ceded authorization. Now, remember, they didn't have all these powers before. Ceded home rule powers to the county. And so, there's a constitutional commission. We amended the South Carolina Constitution with respect to local government. They passed the South Carolina Local Government Act and gave counties home rule powers, which then now, counties can now do fire service. They can now do water service. They can now do sewer service, as I've referenced. They can now do recreation service. But what you can't have is overlapping functions of government. So to the extent that you have special purpose districts that are already in place, they can't encroach upon the powers that you have because in the implementation authorization of the... Any special purpose district, we recognize that, and we're just going to kind of hold them in abeyance. We're not getting rid of them. The powers that, you know, the organizations that were created, you know, you've been in existence for 15 years, that one, you build assets, you didn't do anything. We're going to just kind of let you lie out there in the way. Well, that's all shiny good in the big scheme of things because it's satiated, the special purpose districts that were in existence, that's 1973. But if we now fast forward 40 years later, what that means is, is that you can no longer pass laws affecting a single county than have them be legal. And that's an important consideration because the way you create special purpose districts is by special legislation. And when you were a special purpose district, only operating within Richmond County, laws that are implemented to affect you and give you authorization are now unconstitutional. They're put in place after March 7th, 1973. And so, you'll see here on this list of outstanding acts, most of them happened in the 60s, and a lot of those were... Talk about where your service territory was, talk about how we implement and approve our board membership, and we'll talk about those a little more specifically here in a minute. And then it also authorized tax levy. It also authorized the ability to issue debt. It also authorized the ability to move service boundaries, or what happens that you get annexed into by another municipality. But then, as you get outside of 1973, you'll see here, you still have a number of pieces of special legislation that continue to get enacted. And that's because of the senators who historically had all this power to go off and haul off a piece of special legislation, didn't like getting rid of their control. And so, we've seen that very specifically. And in fact, this act, 2007, 2005, we'll talk about it in a minute, has been expressed a challenge by this organization. This act right here changed the constitution of the Board because in 67, this act, they added some additional committees to the original five to go to seven. And under the terms of it, that act transitioned the appointment authority from the Richmond County Legislative Delegation to Richmond County Council. Well, that meant that the people that appointed you, you all got appointed, recommended by legislative delegation, appointed by the governor, they devolved that power from legislative delegation to the county because the county was raising hell about them having to approve your budget and all the taxes. And so, that authorization got transitioned. Well, the former administration of this organization said, we're not going to let you just come and vote out all of our commissioners. And so, they actually brought suit on that and ruled unconstitutional. And there's a whole litany of cases out there that expressly state that all amendments to special purpose districts occurring in a single county post-March 7th, 1973, are explicitly unconstitutional. The problem is, is that if an act is passed, it's deemed valid until it's changed. So it's actually valid law until you have to bring a lawsuit against it to undo it or overturn. And that creates problems for special purpose districts. Here you are, you haven't been able to have a piece of game-changing legislation that affects you in now going on 40, 40 some odd years. And so, you're still operating under this authorization that existed, you know, 60 years ago. So the only way now, under the Constitution, that you can mend the operation and existence of a special purpose district is you have to pass a general law, which means that you have to pass a law through the legislature that affects all special purpose districts across the entire state. That's a problem because things that affect you independently in Richmond County may not apply in Charleston, or may not apply in London, or may not apply if they pass a general piece of special purpose district legislation that respects fire districts. You know, that doesn't mean anything to you as a recreation provider. And so, it becomes really disjointed as to how new authorizations put in place. Unfortunately, with that kind of history lesson behind us, that's where we stand, and that's the status from which we need to operate. Any questions on that? So it's a really kind of interesting historical perspective about how all this has rolled out. So let's look about this commission in particular because I think that's an important history for y'all. So under the original Enabling Act, the authorization for this organization, whether they gave in 1960, five members recommended by the legislative delegation, I think it was actually the senator at the time, and appointed by the governor. Then, there was an amendment in 67 where they actually... Oh, excuse me, there was amendment 61 where they added the authorization for the county supervisor, who was the road supervisor at the time. They had five members plus the county supervisor. So it operated like that for a couple of years. And then in 67, they said, no, county supervisor doesn't need to be a part of this, and they added two more committees. And that's, that's the way that you operate. That's the way that this board is currently... The 76th Act, but that's the way it works. And so, you get recommended by legislative delegation, appointed by the governor for whatever terms it should have. And so, that's been in place. There was amendment 76 that is also invalid, but it just definitely changed into legislative delegation as opposed to this line, majority of the houses in the county. It's a distinction without a difference, if you ask me, because that is the legislative delegation effectively. So if you could actually challenge the 76th Act, and it would then devolve you to the 67th Act because it goes back to the most recently valid enactment that would be in place, but there's no reason to do that. I don't intend to have all the history or the understanding because I've only sort of been working for the district here in the last couple of years. But I know there have been lots of conflicts through time with the county. And one of those major reasons was the county didn't like the fact that they had the requirement to approve your budget. And I think that is still an ongoing saga to this day. Had the budget, but didn't have any control over the members who were making decisions as to how that budget was ultimately planned for. And so, they, which is strange to me because the legislative delegation typically likes to maintain the degree of control that they have, but they got a piece of special legislation passed in 2005, and that special legislation explicitly states that the powers that they had given themselves as the legislative delegation under the 60, 61, 67, and 76 acts are now devolved to Richmond County. And so, this organization, as I alluded to earlier, brought a case called Ray Davis versus Richmond County, in which that authorization was invalid. Didn't make the county council all that happen. And actually, in the following year, they passed the legislation that, I'm looking through this, preparing for this discussion, that now required you to actually submit their budget to the county council, which is also invalid and should otherwise be challenged. Any questions on that general point?
What was the last thing you said about taking budget?
We'll talk about it here. The discussion here, back there. So you can see, this is really old legislation. So like, that's what you have in your packet. I tried to just took a screenshot about the way things operate. This is the authorization for where you are all the other providers. As a district, this operation of the district includes all areas in Richmond County, not in Ray Davis City, unless it's Columbia. So what happens is, the city of Columbia annexes the property out. As they continue to grow their boundaries, they're levying taxes for all of their general governmental functions. Well, as they annex property, they're basically eating into your service territory. Now, another question that also comes up, you know, city of Columbia is not the only city operating in Richmond County. You've got Fort Davis, you've got Arcadia Lakes. All of them have the authorization to do recreation. So it creates a question as to what happens with your responsibility to provide recreation if you have, you know, you have facilities that are incorporated municipalities. What is the responsibility of it? That's an open question, something that, you know, we can do by agreement. There are ways to work through that. You probably want to memorialize those relationships where you're operating within the city to make sure that they indeed agree for you to have facilities to operate in. Historically, you've done it, so I don't think a lot of people are going to pause into question. But that's what happens. And so, you've got to start thinking through how that service territory evolves. And the reason that's important is because, remember, the way that this organization operates is you levy taxes. You don't put a fee, you don't, you charge minimal fees for use of some of your facilities. But the lion's share of the revenue you use to operate this organization comes from taxes. And so, if you lose service territory when someone annexed it into your service area, that reduces your tax penalties, which usually reduces your ability to levy taxes. And that is, so that's an important consideration for you as you get in. It's boot the ball. Okay, so we talked about it a second ago. You only have those powers because you're a Dillon's Rule institution. You only have those powers that are expressly granted to you by your enabling legislation. So this original enabling legislation, 60 Act, and those 16 various amendments, and then whatever you also receive by a general law. And this is basically, I hate to summarize it in short form, but this is basically the snapshot of what you're allied with. And so, you have the ability to sue and be sued. Obviously, you have the ability to protect your rights. You can define a quorum, although that's probably been redefined by the terms of employment, which say that a quorum is a relative majority of the constituent membership of the organization. You have to adopt a court seal, which obviously, y'all have the ability to do so. You can acquire property, yes, versus or even maybe a sandwich, as well as education or recreation facility. We'll get back to this one in a second because it's an important iteration. You can expend money for corporate functions. You could acquire and operate apparatus and equipment. You can prescribe rules and regulations, which we'll talk about. Some of those things that we need to adopt. You can fix rates and charges, so you can actually set charges and make these for facilities that you use. You can enter into... And employ agents, so that's the reason you hired your executive staff. And you can issue debt to be able to connect those facilities. Don't notice in this original authorization, this is your 1960 authorization, you didn't have the ability to levy debt. So that had to come in as a subsequent act that we'll talk about here in a second. But an important one is, see here, and this is where, you know, people will say, well, lawyers just screw everything up. They screw everything up. You have the ability to acquire property, but what you don't have is the ability to sell property. And it's a Dillon's Rule entity. If you don't have it, you are not granted the power of all this right here. You don't actually have that power. So there may be excess assets of this organization. We talked about it. There may be excess assets in this organization that if you wanted to get rid of them, you can't. And so, we've actually talked about with staff, the potential of working with the Special Purpose District Association to have them pass a piece of special, or excuse me, pass a piece of general legislation in the Special Purpose District Act, which we'll talk about here in a second. Fire property, the ability to also sell property. Because it makes absolutely no sense that as you acquire an asset through time, if you decided to build a new executive suite on the piece of property that's over, you know, the kid died on the spot that decided it, you can't get rid of the former spot. So you're going to sit there and have an old facility that you can't get rid of. And that just doesn't make any sense, and I think there's probably an argument to be had. So I saw Mayor Bob on there. This is a discussion for Mayor Bob to start walking through with his conduct. So I think it would recognize at some point in the process, wow, we have this big organization that has the ability to provide recreation services in Richmond County, but it doesn't have the independent authorization or ability to tax. And so, what happened was, in 1965, five years after you were created, it gave you the authorization to levy .5 minutes, which is not a whole lot of taxing authorization. As y'all may remember... which is not a whole lot of taxing authorization, as y'all may remember, millage is the way values of property that carry to be able to determine what you can hold. So you could levy up to half a mil against all taxable property in your service territory and use that as the rest of the stock. And then they must realize a couple of years later, a half a mil isn't going to do it. We have other facilities that move to a mil and a half. Then sixty-nine, it moved it to five mils. And you'll see here the importance consideration of it. I didn't actually quote the language, but you can go full act reset of the eighteen sixty-nine packet. And it says, "The commission shall be authorized to levy not exceeding five mils for the purposes of operating and maintaining the operations of the district." Sounds fairly innocuous to me, a fairly straightforward authorization. But our good friend, Mr. Weaver, who y'all are probably familiar with because he's, we've seen him recently, sued the district, and you actually created probably the seminal case for special purpose district all over the state in ninety-seven, saying that the delegation of taxing authority to an appointed board is unconstitutional delegation of possibly, but about, about people at large, you're appointed to a political appointment. And so you don't have the authorization independently to approve taxes. So the court said, even though that legislation was put in place in sixty, in sixty-nine, it wasn't a home rule question as to whether or not it's unconstitutional. It was an impermissible delegation of legislative function to an unelected board, and they validated it. And so in nineteen ninety-eight, when this decision came out, ninety-seven, when the decision came out, they basically, if you read the opinion, the court says, this is invalid, but we recognize that this is going to create lots of problems for that eight hundred and some odd special purpose district that operates in South Carolina. Legislature, you need to fix this problem. But the legislature, in its confidentiality, passed Act six eleven two seventy-one. And they basically said, okay, we're just going to cap the special purpose district at whatever level they were, they were levying prior to this being, this being ruled invalid. So in your, in your and they just slotted you in at the five mil levy that you had in. But I have a couple of other clients, like, I don't, I don't think they have any problems with public. The Hilton Head Special Purpose, Hilton Head number one special purpose district down in Hilton Head, is one I call. They had this exact same language in their native legislation that said, you can levy up to ten mils. Well, at the time, they were only levying three. So they basically, as a result of the Weaver case and the legislation, they're, you know, historically had the ability to go up to ten, thought they were being good stewards of their taxpayer dollars. And this is now validated, their new cap, because of the Weaver legislation, the Weaver obligation is now three. So they can't go over three. And so, you know, they have the ability to operate because they charge water sewer rate. But it was nice to have a tax levy to help support some other growth areas, especially for ancestral islanders, you know, folks that have been on Hilton Head a lot longer than multimillion dollar purpose. And so that's, you know, that's obviously an issue that folks need to deal with. This, this, this act was more recently challenged. And he kind of got laughed out of court objectively, did pin it. The court basically says, you challenge that you have a valid argument, whether or not you think it was valid or not. I mean, not, not soapbox here, is that the legislature gave you the ability to levy up to five mils. That is a cap limit. If they just said you got to levy tax, yeah, that may be a problem. But they gave you a statutory cap, I don't think that's an overdelegation. But being that it's made, that's the law. He sued you votes recently, basically saying, oh yeah, this same legislation that the legislature passed to fix the problem? That's also invalid. And just try, try to get that to stop, and also try to get this, the bypass authorization with county now approve your budget. Because there's two ways to bypass the statutory nineteen ninety-eight cap that applies to every special purpose district, and this is a piece of general, general law. You can either have a referendum, you bypass your statutory cap from nineteen ninety-eight, or you can go to the county council every single year, and the county council as the elected body operating in your community take the path of going to county council every single year to have them approve your budget. The one way you got is to get around that, is if you were to hold a special referendum, you submitted the question to your voters and said, we're legally capped at five mils. Now, you're not operating about, like, any group. Thirteen point five. So that means if legislature, if the, the county decided tomorrow, we don't want to approve you at thirteen point five mils, we need to call back the five. That would be catastrophic for this organization. There are potentially, if you work around that, but it's not something I think we want to otherwise spike through. So it brings up a conversation of whether or not, you know, further discussion needs to be evolved around how we advance this organization forward and, and start to have some independent authorization. Because if the legislature, the tax paying public by referendum approves a new mils cap, you can go up to that number and end up, don't have that county council oversight approval. That being said, in preparing for this discussion, thirty-one of two thousand and six, this is the tax code. And I don't, I think that this was a piece of spite legislation, is basically the only way I can think of it, is that when they got mad that you invalidated their authorization to appoint people for members, they said, all right, well, now you always have to come back to us to get our, your budget approved through county council. So they passed this piece of special legislation that says, the governing body of recreational commission, where they levy taxes, has to come, and that authorization to approve that can only be vested through county council. Now, that's, that's the way state law works with respect to debt, with operating budget, that kind of case. So this is absolutely and unequivocally an unconstitutional piece of legislation. But as I said before, it's valid until it's otherwise challenged. So it leaves us two, two results, we're probably going to need to get a piece of legislation passed abolishing or terminating this, or we're going to have to reinvent action to get it out. And it's, again, there's not many absolutes in the back of the wall, but I can say unequivocally that this is unconstitutional and should be overturned. That would be to invalidate something that we know is unconstitutional. Hopefully, we can get legislature to simply pass a piece of legislation to revoke that. So conversations that probably will continue to evolve as we move forward. Any questions on that? All right. Okay, so we've gotten through your special legislation. As I alluded to earlier, you can only, you know, outside of now not being able to pass legislation affecting a single county, you now have to pass general laws, or general laws that are already on the books, affecting local government general applied. So what's a perfect example of that? Y'all are obviously subject to FOIA as a, as a special purpose district, a local government body. But, you know, the idea of how you hold meetings, and we'll talk about that in a little while as well, or how you produce public records, you're obviously going to be directly responsible. The State Ethics Act, how, how do you report ethical violations, or how do you operate as an organization? Same thing with executive staff, same thing with members. That, you know, that's a good issue. And obviously, the state constitutional provisions would obviously apply as well. So I did actually just pull together kind of a list of general legislation that affects you. So one, one of the ones that's probably important, you know, recognizes, it's the only requirement you have to actually hold in the public hearing, and it's the adoption of your annual budget. So six one, six F one dash eighty, requires you to run a news, a newspaper, and let anyone that wants to come in and talk about your budget, see it, receive it, and then count it. Problem with that is that approving your budget, because of that tax issue, you still got to go back to county council and have it validated. So one of those questions that I always have wrestled with is you got to go back to county council, and like last year, county council cuts your budget by a million and some odd dollars, you then have to go back in and do a subsequent budget authorization to your budget. But, you know, those, those are the types of things that we just don't have access to. Political investments, so money that you have, you know, cash reserves in the organization, you if there is express prohibition on investment in equity. So there is a statute, a record on point, that basically limits the potential risk associated with the investment in public funds. And so one of the places you can always park money is with the, the local government investment pool administered by the state treasurer. It probably is one of the best spots to, to park cash, and I think Randy, you've now done a fair amount of that, or at least had the conversation about it. Yeah, hadn't, hadn't, hadn't done it yet, but since you have cash and your limitations are, you can basically put money in a US treasury, which the ten-year treasury is still under one percent, I think, one point or other this year, close to zero. You aren't making a whole lot of money with money. The local government investment pool is probably is, is clean and efficient place to do it, if you can use your money correctly, and it's very safe. Um, authorization for fees, so there's authorization by state laws to put on development impact fees. I don't know any special purpose districts that do this outside of the water sewer contact. But the basic idea behind that is, is that as developers move into your community, they build, you know, a developer comes in, they build a, you know, mixed-use development, they put in dollar apartments, and they put in, you know, new assets. They're going to be sort of a burden on the existing essential taxpayers that pay for the assets here when they're getting better. So that's the idea of putting on fees to basically recuperate the impact of, of the, the burden that they're putting on. It may make sense in the recreation context, it's typically done mostly in water sewer. Some other, they, they go up into the rock hill area, the school relax, they're putting on challenges, they've gone on around what those impacts are from school. Basically, the catch-all is in Title VI, Chapter eleven. So now that every special purpose district can't have particular laws passed in their counties, legislature just has this kind of grab bag, and when they pass so that's, you kind of have to kind of look back through the legislative history to see when changes occur as to whether or not it affects you. But if there is a particular authorization in Title VI, Chapter eleven, as to how you would potentially expand or contract your downshifts about the camera, as to how you levy certain particular fees, and ultimately how you would dissolve it. It's, it's prohibitively difficult to dissolve a special purpose district once they're created. That's actually been part of the rub as well. In order to do so, you have to get a petition signed by, I believe it's fifteen percent of qualified liquor, just to put it on the, on the ballot, which in Richland County, when you've got several hundred thousand people, you have to get a petition signed by thirty or forty thousand people just to put it on the, on the ballot, and then it has to pass by a super majority. So the idea of voting you out of existence is pretty much never, ever, ever going to happen. And because, and so absent the legislature passing which would make all special purpose come out of the woodwork, they can't dissolve you by special legislation. Legislature actually tried to do that with, with respect to the Richland County Historical Foundation, and they, they took their authorization, they basically diluted it down inside the post of standing for assets in the county. So now you can't do that because there's only one way to dissolve special purpose districts, through that, which is, as I said, is a really hard way to do it. So it's this really weird dynamic that you have as a special purpose district, where you, you were created, you're operating under powers that you received sixty years ago. You can't change those powers unless you pass special laws. And then you're seen as a burden to, you know, the efficiency of government in certain areas, for certain people. But you can't do anything about you because it can't get rid of you. So you, you fall in this really weird kind of no man's land, and that's the reason I'm not, like I said, doing all the kinds of redheaded stepchild of, of local government. You perform a necessary service, recreation is vital. You know, you go outside and exercise and, and not be stuck in your house, it is vital to the kind of public health of anything. But there are some limitations that we all have to work with. So that's just kind of a list of, of general laws that I'll say. Okay, so we're sort of putting in some language in here, and you'll see that my kind of discussion generally follows the way that you're, you're in the followed, but just also interrupted. So something to think about as members of, of this board, as well as the executive staff. There is a constitutional prohibition on what's called dual office. So it's the idea of holding two, two offices of honor and profit. So you, believe it or not, this is a position of honor and profit. It's, it may not be profit, but certainly honor. And as a result, yeah, yeah, your, your actual authorization does not, does not allow you to receive compensation, although there is got called in tomorrow, or you ran into the legislature, and you, you ran for one of those seats, that would be anyone, and so you became a senator, you couldn't serve on both this board and, and that board. And so there are lots of A D opinions out there about how that honor and profit kind of motivation there. So, you know, there, there are things that, you know, happen all the time. If you're on the election commission, you can't be on, on this board, or if you're appointed, you don't be on the penny sales tax commission, you can't be on this board. So it's just something to make sure you're aware of, because if you do accept a position and consider another position of honor and profit, you are deemed to have automatically resigned your position of office, which then creates issues, because then you got to go back through the process again. So I point that out just so that y'all are generally aware of that. Okay, so now we kind of get into the meat and potatoes of what it is to be a commission. And so that's this idea of what, what is your role as the governing body of this organization? It, it's hard for some board members to realize where that lies. And so you've never had more training or discussions about what that is. Now, there's no, there's no particular fight line, no, no one gave you a packet when you stepped in and said, hey, this is what you are as a special purpose district, these are your powers, and this is what your role is as a commission. At some level, you just kind of had to work your way through it. But historically speaking, we look back to what your native legislation says. It says, you know, previously, you have the ability to implement rules and regulations to employ executive staff to make decisions about the operation of the organization. And so at that level, the way that I typically describe this, the cities that I represent, counties that I represent, that if you are a city council, or a county council, or a governing board of a special purpose district, you don't get involved in the day-to-day operations of, of this, of this organization. What you do is you, you're the big picture, you set policy, that policy then becomes a law. You know, you make decisions on is the, the decision on how you operate as an organization. And so that doesn't mean we make decisions about, you know, what the hours of a bigger facility are. But you may make decisions that, you know, we want to close this facility because it doesn't make long-term sense in our long-term budget. Or we need to make sure that we have a FOIA policy, or that we have procurement policy, or that we have high laws for how the organization otherwise, and then you make decisions absolutely about who you hire to fill the role of the executive director, but what you don't have is the ability to then call into question the decisions that she makes other than the conversation beyond, you know, her, her annual review as to who her, her staff is, because that is essentially the executive director function that she has been hired by this board to make decisions as to how you operate and implement policies that you hold. So I think good conversations for us, the executive director involved, what our vision and mission are, and how to balance conversations involved, who works where, and the allocation of facilities. Absolutely. The, the, those decisions are inherently operational. So that is the break point here. You're, you're the big picture, you are setting policies, you are making organizational decisions about how it's going to be in the future. Now, at the end of the day, you ultimately approve the budget. And so if you said, look, if Laquita says, I need a new facilities operator at the, the tennis center at X, Y, Z, and you say, well, we don't have money in the budget, yeah, you could, you could get there on the back of an action, but then you can cut it off, the budget, if that doesn't make sense.
But in theory, that would be, could be considered a misuse.
Yeah, I think that's, that's probably an overstep of your function, unless there is any legitimate budgetary function for making that decision. But again, staff is also preparing that budget for you to make the big picture decisions as to, you know, does it make sense to put on a cost of living minimum? Do we need to benchmark staff salaries to inflation? You know, do we need to make a decision as to whether or not this facility you know, operates three days a week or privately, but if it's not, if it doesn't make sense, because it's in an area that four people a month show up to, it probably doesn't make sense to make that facility stay operational. And so not every, so the line of clothes is inbound.
Yeah, but you go.
But the details of that, of the actual function of that being open, or how, how would the facility be maintained if it's closed, that's the executive director and her delegate staff, correct?
But sometimes you have to get into the, before, you know, before people are waiting to show up at the park.
Right.
Is causing it not to be profitable, hence our advice is to shut it down. So you do have to back in.
That's right.
Into some, you have to back into some of the minutia, make the decision.
And some of that should be ultimately delivered to you through the executive staff. At the end of the day, the reason that you hired a good record is to give you of the day, the reason that you hired a good director is to give you that information ultimately to make the decision as to how you decide you want to make the decision. That's the reason that you're appointed here is to make decision on how the facility function. And we got to make the decision or have a conversation and have a proper decision whether or not that facility is going to play.
Correct.
That's, that's, that's ultimately right. You were responsible for the management of the asset. So, and then again, that comes back to the how, when and where issue. These are the big picture ideas about, you know, what power to give through violation. What are the decision-making thresholds with respect to it? Because that's probably the difference of one that is otherwise out there, is the idea of what are the, what are the breakpoints behind, you know, where you feel comfortable with staff making purchases. So that needs to be laid out policy. And right now, we're not, we're not on terms on what that policy would be. Um, so one of the things that's in your pack of the day, and we're about to get up and talk about it, is the provisions that we've developed, that we've generated before as a draft policy for procurement. Because state law, there is, you know, obviously everyone recognizes the state has a procurement code in our, you know, cooperative purchasing obligation, state local government. So cities, counties, some school districts, and special purpose district. State law says you only have to adopt a policy affecting, um, appropriately competitive procurement. Which means you don't have to follow the procurement. You just have to have a policy that you've implemented that implements and authorizes purchase to be made at certain thresholds. Well, that needs to be sufficiently significantly rewritten, a draft of that has been done. The question is, is if you approve something in the budget and you need to put in a new slide apart, if that's a $5,000, that's probably not something that needs to come in front of this board to make the decision. But if it's a $500,000, that probably is. So it's a matter of defining what you think is material with respect to budget.
Do we have a number for that?
Yeah. Well, so there's, there are threshold numbers.
There is.
Sarah, you want to, you want to jump into this discussion of procurement here real quick? We'll come back to these in a second. But these are general. So that, my, my next step for you is that one, to then think about it. These are some of the things that are, as a kind of board function, I would absolutely, if not, but if we recommend that you don't already have in place, or you haven't revisited since this board came into effect. These are the big picture items that need to be addressed. So obviously the budget is done every year. FOIA is something that gets administered every single day. They're actually a draft FOIA policy and talk about what that looks like here. So, because on the second half of my presentation, I'm going to be talking about, um, uh, FOIA. Um, but HR and employment, obviously that's as, as vital to the organization. But frankly, one of the major hurdles that y'all had is, is each useless staff and staff litigation. How do you deal with that? Uh, you have a full-time labor employment layer as your, as your local council, um, to be able to do that. So that process. Complex ventures, we've actually implemented kind of a general contract of interest policy in your procurement. Procurement, and Sarah's going to talk about whistleblowers. If someone says, you know what, I'm being sexually harassed and it being my direct boss, um, what is, what is the policy internally for how that happens? Because believe you, if that's all the, other than time in place. Red flag is about how you administer public fund received information about social security numbers. Vile, those are obviously important because right now, the vile is if you have in place, what is the rule of procedure that you follow for holding a board? Do you follow our rules? But if you kind of default to that, but if you don't state it, you have to send that that's what your viles follow, you just kind of have their flow to win. So figuring out what some of those alter agents are. We've suggested some fairness provisions to your viles and also a package of what you have in front of you today. Operating regulation, things that you want to talk about, about the facilities, how they're going to operate, um, what those hours of operation may all be, what staff salaries or, you know, what's, what staffing or employment may all come through. If there are large big picture discussions that need to happen, that's where you set that as a policy. Capital planning, that's going to be part of the discussion on Monday. Thinking through what capital plan looks like for facilities that need to happen. You know, the, it's, it's, it's seen. Now, it's one thing to operate that budget or to adopt that budget, but until you've done a thorough review of all the facilities that you have, you know, when you've got, you know, how many facilities do you have under management?
A little over 40.
So you have 40, you have 40 facilities. And so that means that you have 40 light bills, 40 water bills and 40 sewer bills and 40 roofs that need to be otherwise viewed. 40, 40 buildings that may otherwise need to be hanged. And if you don't have a capital plan that looks at all of those facilities and says, we need to replace a roof every single year. Well, roofs have a 30-year useful life on them, give or take. Maybe it has a longer useful life. I'm sure there are roofs out there that's, that have a 60-year, yeah, they're 60 years old for them to have to replace if you're able to create. But thinking through those things and then matching that up with your operating budget and your long-term capital budget is the discussion that, that Randy is going to start having with you on, uh, on Monday. Because that in and of itself, we could do an entire work session just around the cap. I did what I did because, you know, tomorrow, this roof could start leaking, you know, the HVAC unit could otherwise go bad. You know, and all of a sudden you start talking about replacing 40 HVAC units, $10,000 a pop, or, you know, $20,000 a pop. That's a million bucks. And that's, you know, where's that million dollars at the moment? So thinking strategically through not only capital maintenance, but new capital facilities. Because there may be some of those facilities that are not at work, continue to pump money into the HVAC system that's so inefficient or you out for, for the coordination, you know, uh, retention. All of that needs to start being built into a capital plan that is probably looked at on a five, 10, and maybe even longer period, wrapping that around the plans for long-term debt, which right now we've got some limitations on what we can borrow about. We have new obligations that, new long-term capital, and also identifying funds in your operating budget to do pay-go capital, um, as opposed to just kind of doing it all large as things otherwise come up. And that's not to say that things don't happen, but that you should also probably have some depreciation to pop up, you know, out of, I, I would think out of the ordinary, certainly the others don't have a lot of expectation. So with that, I will give it, Sarah, I just kind of generally talk through the proposed viles, the procurement code, the proposed FOIA policy, as well as the, uh, proposed P car policy.
Um, and so I know there were some questions specifically about procurement, but I think it starts to start with bylaws. If you could think of, you know, I think there are the Russian nesting dolls, or it's the big doll, you open up, you're a little doll, so it's not a personal. Your big doll in this is going to be your bylaws. Um, your bylaws, your overarching stuff, everything from as far as mentioned, how you run meetings to the obligations which Laquita can ensure the district been to. Um, the bylaws are kind of overarching. And so if you have a current set of bylaws, they were enacted in 2017. And in looking at them and reviewing them, we saw some areas for improvement. Um, for example, the ethic, the ethics law, which y'all are governed by, it referenced like a national recreation district kind of policy, um, which all intents and purposes might be mine, but definitely best practice to reference what you're actually governed by. You know, knowing from the National Recreation Association, so it's funny, plus it y'all for doing something wrong, but if you buy like the state ethic policy, you're going to be in trouble there. So, um, best to duck bill with that. And so as I mentioned, this is our largest nesting doll. So in drafting these bylaws, we make sure that they are read, they can be read and stated with the procurement policy and P car policy. Uh, we have spent a lot of time, the staff, with Laquita, with Brandy, Cicely, Tamika, everybody, we spend a lot of time on these, making sure that they can all be read together. There's nothing contradictory. Because what you don't want to have happen is to say, oh, well, I was following the procurement code when I did this transaction. And I mean, it was fine. And then you look at your bylaws and you say, eh, well, actually this is contradictory to our bylaws. You know, that just creates a whole host of problems. Together.
Which is an important consideration. But remember, the reason behind implementing policy is to give staff direction as to how they implement. The biggest problem with some with over, you know, with over implementing policy is that if you put something in place and said, this is the way we're going to do something, and then you ignore it or disregard it or don't follow it, where you have competing provisions and someone challenged you on it, you've created a roadmap and you are dead in the water of what you have to follow during your work. So that is, a lot of times your policy is going to be written around things that we know you're already doing. We're memorializing it to be able to give you that roadmap in case someone goes there.
Um, and as Lawrence said, this is your framework. So bylaws enable Laquita to execute payments and sign checks up to $5,000 and to otherwise obligate the district up to $100,000. And so that obligation would be, you know, entering into leases, contracts, those sort of things. Um, and that's what the bylaws offer. The procurement code kind of sets the framework of, okay, how does Laquita get to a point where she's ready to execute a check for $5,000? Laquita can't just go to Target and buy some $5,000. The procurement code sets out the exact steps to get to a point where she's comfortable, the district's ready to exert, to execute that $5,000 check. Same with the $100,000 obligations. So know that when you are reviewing the bylaws and approving the bylaws, the bylaws are read and standard with the procurement code. So the procurement code needs to make sure you're comfortable with the procurement code, because as I said, the procurement code hits to the point where the $5,000 check is executed. Um, the bylaws also set for how to approach conflicts. Um, this goes to the ethics portion here. Um, commissioners cannot be entering into contracts that benefit themselves or immediate family members. Um, they also can't be gaining, they can't be associated with the corporation that's going to get an economic gain from the contract. Um, and so there's a policy laid out in the bylaws, what to do if you are an interested policy. You have to make a written statement and have, it has to be read and submitted, and you have to recuse yourself from the decision-making process. You don't actually have to leave the room, but you can't, you have to be silent. You can't participate in the back and forth of the decision-making. Um,
Which is an important consideration and we'll talk about it a little down here with respect to FOIA. But if you, if state law requires that for medical statements, for you to disclose natural violation. As you said, you do it in writing, you submit it to the, to the keeper of the minutes and you can stay in the room. But you're then disqualified for purposes of becoming a quorum. So that, that's an issue. So if, you know, you've got five members on your board, and you're required to have seven for purposes of being able to do business or a quorum, is ultimately required to be four. So if four of you happen to show up to a meeting and one of you got disqualified for a conflict of interest, you all of a sudden no longer have a quorum to do this.
Contracts have been invalidated on that point. That's really something to keep in mind. Do you pay attention to your agendas when they come out and you think, all right, do I have a conflict in this point? And also, even if you don't have a direct economic interest in it, if you perform an official function related to the contract, so let's say that you work for the company, which contract is being entered into, and you don't get a pay bump because of it, but you work for that company and you would otherwise sign the contract. Well, you can't precipitate. You can recuse yourself and the district can still enter into that contract so long as you are in arms length. You can't have any involvement with it. You have to be specifically Chinese-walled away from that. So that's another thing to keep in mind. You know, your relation to different people, you know, you, and you are otherwise be involved with the actual contract.
So just to put that in perspective, if you actually had the ability to sell property, you could hire Rob's firm to list that facility. But Rob couldn't vote on it if he was having a direct interest in the result. So
But if I was a partner in that.
If you were a partner in the firm and you actually were not responsible for drafting the bid specifications for how the public procurement of that facility. So if you, you put it out to the market and you said, we're going to let Trinity, you know, Trinity bids on it and NAI bids on it and Carter bids on it, and you have to be a low bid, that doesn't disqualify you because you're the chairman of the board. As long as it was done in the open, you didn't vote on it and it was done based on good faith procurement, that is still okay to be done. The key to it is, is that you weren't responsible for drafting the bid specs for putting that out in this list.
Well, don't you want, don't you want to avoid the, the appearance of
So, at least it's a really good point. Sometimes the appearance of a variety is just as bad as the actual product. And so that is an internal decision as to how you would ultimately want to treat that situation. You may just say, look, we're disqualifying ourselves because we don't need, we don't need the political blowback of, you know, of the newspaper writing articles saying that story.
Right.
Exactly. Very good point. Um, so now we'll get into the purchasing and procurement and the bylaws. I think this is tab C in your, um, handout. And this sets the framework for procuring goods, services, contracts. Like I said, it gets you to that point where you're ready to execute the contracts. Um, there's important, important exceptions from procurement code, professional services, such as attorneys, accountants, engineers. There is a big one with procurement code. Um, the fault behind this being, you don't want to go cheap on your accounting. You don't want to go cheap on your attorney. Uh, and also there's, you know, when you've got an established relationship with technology, for example, there are another firm that's exempted. I'm very impressed with y'all's technology. And y'all don't want to just give out the next contract to some technology firm because they were the lowest bidder. And then all of a sudden their stuff isn't compatible with y'all's and before you know it, they're just all throwing out all of your technology, buying new technology that works with theirs. It just creates, you know, having that foundational base with qualified professionals is more something. And for those reasons, it's exempted from the procurement code. Um, subject to y'all's approval, when you get to those thresholds, the actual process of how you hire some, how you hire someone is not subject to the processes of the procurement code. Um, we've also built in some really state-of-the-art flexibility that allow y'all to be lean and agile with the way y'all go about your projects. Um, there is a design, bid, construct process, which with y'all's approval, the district can enter into. And so this means rather than having to go out and bid for every single step of, you know, a new baseball facility, y'all can pick one person to design it and then sub out the bids for the contract. And you do it kind of in an overarching comprehensive plan rather than having to break up every single contract and bid out every single contract. Then you've got people in there to work with people and this, that and the other helps continuity and you have this larger projects. Um,
And that's not unique to you. That, that is actually the, the alternative delivery system that is recognized by the state. We don't follow the state procurement code on alternative delivery. I mean, the deployment of local government services. So unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, typically when you put something out to bid, people bid on it because they know you're going to pay. But they also think that because you've got tax dollars behind you, they don't give you a whole lot of business. So know, knowing that you're able to go out and get the lowest-cost services because someone else did it for you.
So I, I've worked on this kind of stuff at a much smaller scale with, um, designing building weight rooms. One of the hard things for me is that whenever I go to a company and I'm like, hey, I want to build this weight room, and they give you specs that are going to be specific, they're, they're giving specs not just for me, but with the way that they build their equipment and their functionality.
Exactly.
It's difficult for me to be like, okay, thank you, company A, for giving me all the specs and all this stuff here. It's going to take more time and effort and all that. And then I'm going to go to a company B and award the bid, when they're actually, a lot of times they're not going to give you the exact same specs. They say they will, but I end up with a different product.
Yeah. And so that, that gets back inherently. So if you, if you go out there and you've done the diligence on the front end, you say, you know, we want pre-core equipment here, we want this particular version of weights. And, you know, the bids come back and one person is dead on to your bids, uh, your bid specs, and the other person offers a competitor that is not what you've otherwise requested. That's an invalidating condition by the terms of your bids. But the key is you got to make sure you follow provisions.
In other words, never mind saying anything bad about one piece of equipment or other, but if you spec out Cybex and PreCore, but Cybex is the industry leader.
Right.
And it's a little bit more expensive. You can take it based on quality.
Correct. So long as you put it out in your original bid frame, you didn't, if you did not designate, if you said, we want a high-quality rowing machine and I, and I put it in, you don't say, we want a Cybex rowing machine. We, if you just said, we want a high-quality rowing machine, then that's not an invalidating condition. You've got to make sure, and your bid specifications as to what you want. Because then that then becomes a ground challenge through the steel process that you've laid out.
And I would say a few things on that. First is any alternative project, you know, alternative processes. Sounds like what you were getting to, Coach. Instead of having to fit out the design, fit out the construction, fit out the, you know, weights that would go in there, what you could do is enter into this alternative process with approval commission. And then you say, you know what, we want to hire one person to decide and build it.
Like a designed build?
Yes. And so you would do a design bid. So it would be one person, the fullest thing they're doing the whole thing. You don't have the issue of like, oh, they did the specs, but now we, these plates, she's appeared unfit. So that would be a design build situation.
Well, I think the other hard part is like, when you don't have bid, there's a certain lack of accountability and transparency. So it's not like I'm, I just wonder, I don't know. I just wonder how. So it's not like I'm, I just wonder, I don't know, I just wonder how
So I wanted to, Sorenex or William Strange would say, hey, you know, industry leader would say Sorenex, and you're there. I guess you could have them, you could have, you could hire them just for your design bill or with commission's approval. Is that correct?
That's right. Yes.
So there's a, there's a problem that allows us to pay a company to design-build, and then still sub out, you know, rest of the
Yeah, I mean, there is all the ways to do design, bid, build, operate, maintain, design, build, all, all of the various methodologies for how to build and draft a procurement code. It gives you that possibility. What, what historically happened in local government procurement was, most folks thought, we're local government, you've got to take low bids.
Right.
That has evolved through time, because we've realized through time that taking the lowest bidder is not the most efficient or most effective way to do business. So having relationships, having bid specifications, to meet and take to our needs of people, because if you know one of them has, you know, it's, it's the industry leader, and it's got a thirty-year useful life, and everything else, that had a fifteen-year or a guarantee or some, you know, uh, central backstop. There's real value in that, it may not be tangible. How you finger on, but the idea of not having to go and add that to your capital plan, where you gotta replace that in fifteen years, for thirty-year physics, there, it, it, it helps itself.
And I would say also, um, it's the, I think it's the third page of the procurement policy. I'd really encourage you to read the, and don't quote me, not really, I might do it, just to pull somewhere in there. Um, there's a definition of lowest qualified bidder. And lowest qualified bidder includes a price consideration, but it also has lots of other points in there of what makes someone the lowest qualified bidder. You know, you're not just getting handed to Joe Blow contracting firm because they gave you the lowest bid. If you start looking at it, you say, wait, you've never built a basketball court before. You've never done this before. You're not qualified to do this. You know, it prevents the district's hands from being bound to just always choosing that lowest-priced bidder, as Lawrence was just saying. Through everything throughout the procurement code, you'll notice we never say the lowest bidder. We always say the lowest qualified bidder, because that's a term of art which we work projects, and people that aren't qualified don't take them.
So, I'm addressing this.
Yeah.
Is this, I think it's tab D, is the chairman?
Yeah.
Gives them a D. What you put here, is that what y'all are proposing to become our new policy, or just our
That's what we're proposing to become new policy.
Yeah. So, so what we would say is, obviously, there's, the discussion today was to build the discussion around, let's have conversations of the policies we're needed. Here are some draft policies, but obviously not expecting help to make any, any decisions about how we go. But the, the thought would be, read them, review them, and I do think that staff would like that, some action taken on them. Not at February, but at some point here in the spring.
Year.
Because we, we really do need to have some of these directions from the commission as to how you want to do it. And so these are suggestions, you know, purchase thresholds are things that we think operationally made sense, and we know you're getting cold today. So to make, if we needed to do another work session, we actually review these policies and say, let's talk about why you put a hundred thousand dollar cap as the, as the number to come back in front of the commission. We think that needs to be too fitty, because, you know, a place, you know, a piece of playground, whatever it is. Those are, those are decisions that, you know, not that, none of this is set in stone. This is the opportunity to start having that conversation. And staff is very familiar with all these purchase thresholds, because they were, you know, I will say, in, in Sicily, your procurement manager, she comes from a very militarized background, um, is very diligent about making sure she, 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 she tracks the purchase threshold. But she can leave tomorrow, and the next person that comes through, you know, may be a little bit more freewheeling. And so we want to make sure that we've got the parameters to be able to give that direction. And so that's what, that's what this discussion is all about.
Mr. Chairman, what I would like to add is, if you, if you recall during the audit that was, the management audit that was nine, eighteen, sixteen, seventeen, prior to me arriving and the appointment, the need for the commission to review the procurement policy as well as incorporate training for all staff that are involved in the process. So we have definitely been moving forward and working as legal, doing everything we're supposed to do, but if you also go backwards to the resolution that was passed for the golf carts. That's why the resolution came to you all, because of that large amount that was requested for that purchase, and that's not telling that could direction without procurement or in the bylaws. So, um, this is for us to look at and review, but we would love to have a separate work session if you have additional questions, so that we can get this passed, so that I am operating consistently between the bylaws and the procurement policy as well as my staff. Thank you.
Um, and then just the last thing I'd point out, the procurement gives preference to vendors who are minorities, veterans, women, and local vendors. We define what it takes to become one of those. Um, and then the, there's preference for them, I think is a great thing.
It's a five percent threshold. So basically, they get to come in and beat the low bid. If, if they fall into one of those blowback categories, they come in and beat the low.
So I think we've really touched on a lot of this, but, you know, y'all are exempt from the state procurement policies. Um, but you are required to have a procurement code. So that's where this has come from, is that, you know, y'all kind of run the show within your procurement code, so that's why we're concerned to have one of those. Um, and this is kind of into the nitty-gritty. This is the threshold of kind of how staff will operate without you. And so as I mentioned, the, um, five thousand dollar number that the PETA can execute a check on, how do we get there? So for purchases that are less than twenty-five hundred dollars, um, those are approved by the procurement manager and the CFO, and those are gonna be your small purchases, no need to do bids, those sort of things for that. When you get to twenty-five hundred to ten thousand, there have to be written solicitations. Um, speaking with staff, you know, this is kind of a squishy place where it's not a ton of money, so it's not a full bid process. People a lot of times aren't, don't want to have to go through a bid process and write a bid to maybe make five thousand dollars. So for this, we have it, just you have to have a written solicitation of that. Um, and then when you get to the ten to twenty-five thousand dollar threshold, that's when you get into the competitive sealed bid process. There have to be, um, excuse me, this is just three written solicitations. This requires notice, we'll advertise for it on the district's website, on the state websites, um, so really putting the word out there, making sure people are interested in it, and you have to get three written solicitations. So when you get above twenty-five thousand dollars is when you get into the very strict sealed competitive bidding. And there's a whole policy for that in the procurement code, but it requires that, when you're writing a bid and you put it out there, you're receiving these sealed bids, they're all opened at a certain time. If they receive late, they're disqualified. Um, so that's, the higher you get, basically, the harder it is. Within these thresholds, everything is still governed by that lowest qualified bidder. Receiving three written solicitations from the ten to twenty-five thousand dollar range, or the written solicitations in the twenty-five hundred to ten thousand dollar range, they're always gonna have in mind that lowest qualified bidder. That's how they're gonna do their decision process, but how they get to that decision process gets more difficult and more difficult. And anything beyond a hundred thousand dollars, it has to be formally approved by the commission. And as Lawrence mentioned, these are thresholds that we've come up with in working with the district and having lots of conversations around how to step forward. You know, what flexibility do y'all need? How do y'all need to function? Um, and through those conversations, we've come up with these numbers. However, if this is something that, as Lawrence mentioned, fellow work session, we want to talk about the nitty-gritty of, all right, why twenty-five thousand, why ten thousand, we're happy to do that. These policies are a draft for, but this is what, um, we've come up with and working with staff. Um, there's also a requirement of a disclosure of interest. We've had a touch on this in bylaws, but it's also in your procurement code to make sure that of the commissioner with the interest to disclose it. It's not the obligation of the chair to, you know, have to be abreast of everybody's interest. You know, that's your obligation as a commissioner, and it's usually gonna be a hot order if you don't do that. You know, that's not the responsibility of the PETA or the chair. You know, it's, you're the one that's gonna take the blame for that.
As, as we alluded to it earlier, you actually see, and now we cited a couple of cases. That Anderson County case actually is somewhat similar to the Richardson County case, where they invalidated a gold parachute from a former county administrator. Um, in this circumstance, they, they basically made a determination that others, seven members of the county council, four members had a direct conflict of interest as a result of, um, the relationship between the former administrator and the members of the council that voted to give him this million-dollar severance, um, million-dollar revolving contract, um, as a result of them serving a lame duck session. And the court invalidated the contract, uh, because that basically said you were served, you, you voted on that, you had a conflict of interest. You disqualified your purposes of, of sitting in an unqualified forum, uh, disqualifying you, only three and seven members, or three to nine members were, were otherwise authorized to vote on it. That invalidates the entire contract. And so, you know, if you're sitting in a position where, you know, you are approving contracts, or you're approving a, a contract with, with, uh, your executive director or staff, you want to make sure that you've done it validly, because of the protection that your contract has to give. You know, if we were doing a bond issue, and, you know, we were, we were bidding on something, and, you know, for, for some reason, gave, gave someone a conflict of interest. Um, you know, you own the bank, and your bank was the low bidder, and you voted on it, that's gonna, that obviously creates issues for us. And so, you know, I had to give a bond counselor into that authorization and said, the contracts that you're signing are valid, are valid, they authorize, and execute them. But if it wasn't valid, they authorize, it invalidates the entire bond. That's a problem.
So backing up to that, which kind of gets back into your policy here, let's just say you do a a two-hundred thousand dollar contract with somebody. Who signs that contract?
So the direct authorization in there, it, it, it depends. The, the thresholds are gonna, are gonna be, if it's a, if you look back at the bylaws, as opposed to you said, you know, for items under five thousand dollars, I don't think that the director can, but once you get into a higher threshold, then it becomes a commissioner or a member of staff, where you have dual signature, uh, dual signature authority, so that you don't have people who run all, sign contracts.
Say, so, like on the Richardson County issue, you know, the last administrator issue was a million dollar, whatever it was, I don't remember, it was a lot. And so they voted, and then he got paid. So who would have written that check? Would the chairman, the commission, or the council sign that check? Or would it have been?
It would be whatever their practice was. I assume that their, their treasurer, the county treasurer, would have signed the check. Problem with that is, though, that, that contract is subject to, also been invalidated.
Right.
But not for a disclosure of voters' little conflict of interest, but on a, a employee-related issue, because they were determined to vote, approve the contract in the exact session. And we have no action to be taken in that session. So that then validates that entire contract. And so then you create the issue with, well, what does that mean for purposes of his contract? That he, that he then had a quantum merit of playing back against him, and he holds it back in the beginning. So it's much cleaner to do this correctly in front of them and keep you out of the game, like the whole, whole lot.
So, um, again, bylaws, procurement policy, and there is purchasing part policy. This is for the day-to-day stuff, when staff, you know, when somebody needs something, they run out, they're buying, you know, they're buying t-shirts, they're buying, you know, small purchases. Um, staff have worked this week really hard. Um, it's been all gas, no brakes this week. Solid. Again, Sicily is awesome at this. I wish every client we work with had a procurement as managers, and Sicily would save us a lot of work in the back end. On a lot of stuff. Um, and, you know, said, this is how this works for us, this is how it doesn't. Here, she made sure that there's training. Everyone is gonna be trained with policy, the cardholder, cardholder supervisor, and the liaison. Everybody involved with this, nation, know what they, anything cannot do with the card. There are specific purchases, because, you know, you can't run out and go back, you can't be a tax, you can't go, you're here, you know, there's things that are prohibited, and it was in the policy for the process for going about when you do the card.
So it really calls here for me to pan down.
Yes. Yeah. Uh, it's a supervisor and Sicily together. Uh, if a supervisor needs the need for a cardholder to have it, supervisor will fill out an application. Application will be a comfortable application, and then depending on your credit limit, they will have Sicily, um, will either check up to their credit limit, if it's below a twenty-five hundred dollar credit limit. I think Brandy was a twenty-five hundred that ended up on, what's Sicily got a report for? And I think anything beyond beyond forty-five hundred dollars, procurement will be beyond twenty-five hundred dollars. It has to go before the PETA or Brandy has got through. Yeah.
So who is gonna do the review of, let's say, employee X, that needs to have a card in her name?
Well, let me, because I want to share that, because I was getting some clarification, but no one gets a card without being signed off. I would know everyone that has.
All right. So who has the card? Who is going to be reviewing that?
The supervisors along with the, um, the current staff.
But every month, they will take a look at that bill and take a quick rip on y'all's
You all get to, you don't get to use your card without private approval.
Right.
Yeah. So every person requires approval. So that approval has to connect that purchase, and it will be reconciled each month.
Yeah, there's a monthly reconciliation here, where the, um, the firm statement and provide receipts and justification that will be, the justification provided in the purchase. And so they will, every month, take that monthly statement and say, all right, here is our receipt for this purchase, here is my purchase warrant for this purchase that I had to fill out before, and I have my documentation through our scheme. When I did it, here's my monthly statement, the match file. So the employees are comfortable, we're going through every single month and doing all their purchases. The employee then hand that to the, their supervisor, the supervisor signs off on it, and then it goes to Sicily. And Sicily looks and says, do the third round, and Sicily says, I, I don't know, this could be different quite enough. Or, do your purchasing warrant, and you are gonna purchase this product, this product from, you know, X, and that's who purchased it from Y. Sicily's the one that is the last stop that would say, whoa, 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 we're not signed off on this. Brandy, Lepita, look at this, you know, we've got to make it clear. So there's ownership from the bottom up of the whole process of how to do that.
And I'll share with you that when I first arrived here, um, I was concerned by the way that the cards were currently being distributed. I think there were about being three P. Card, and my card was to be used by other individuals to make purchases. I came from a system, a very good system that we have starred in my previous job. We were part of the first P card and purchase card group. So Tamika and I are very, very familiar with the process. While we do recognize that there've been a lot of, there's been a lot of public discussion because of some issues that were done by some elected officials. But what I would like for the board to know is that we are working very, this is something I've been working on since the day I came in. So this was not something we just started, because we wanted to make sure that when we bought this to you, that it was bought correctly. And I just would like to share, our current process does not work effectively nor efficiently to run an agency this size. Coming in, getting my card, getting Tamika's card, or getting Brandy's card, or Jamie's card, is just not a good way to run a business. And I know there was a question of like, well, you didn't trust your people card. Well, you shouldn't have people you don't trust. And so we are trusting people that are positioned, and we're gonna hold them accountable through training and through, um, just following through. So I do want to make sure that I share that, because I know it's like, oh my gosh, the purchase P card issue, but feel confident that you're an executive director and you're definitely record. We've been through this rodeo before, and we know how to get it done, and your CFO, procurement management, and Florida, our legal counsel are fully ready to implement this, when you are also ready and comfortable. This is not something that we want to just throw out there, but we want to take the time to go through it. Thank you.
I'm assuming that, now, that maybe we don't have, but is, are these monthly steps when filing steps for that?
Yeah.
Like four years down the road, and you want to go back and check on, you know, March you?
Yep. We have that in the policy, that you have to retain all your statements, all your receipts. Um, and as Lepita said about the fit about people purchasing stuff with your card, I mean, I feel like my card just kind of jumped a little bit ahead. We specifically have in the policy, I think a lot of this, it's gotta go back to owner. Specifically says, you may not transact any purchase with a P card if you are not, your name is not on the card. That is step one, you cannot do that. And that's because at the end of the month, when Lepita's trying to put her card together, she's got purchases that she didn't, you know, transact, and then she's got to get a receipt, you know, that's just, that, that breaks that ownership and responsibility down. So this helps direct ownership. It funnels down to one single person, and it's, you know, it's on them. Someone's misusing the card, it's going to be very evident. Um, there are a lot of people checking behind it.
And if they are misusing it, then they lose the privilege, and they probably, in convert and there probably is a follow-up conversation about if someone is abusing that privilege.
I would assume that's worse than that.
Mistakes happen, but it probably also means that from a policy standpoint, the HR handbook probably needs to be updated. Also, get forward to abuses of P card process, but that should be an element.
And I will say, Charlie, because there are, um, we do have some stuff that, you know, maybe not in the If who's received more than three times, that's a violation. You know, stuff that probably isn't malicious, but your health will hire standard. If you have a P card, you need to be a responsible adult and keep your receipts. So, you know, there are instances where, you know, perhaps someone would violate the P card, but maybe they wouldn't necessarily, you know, face termination or something like that because of the violation.
Like an accidental use, but our policy would be probably neon orange or green or something. So that when you pull that out of your wallet, you will know that it's an R C R C card. It will not look like your other card.
If you're going to use it on your trip, you get it fixed.
Exactly. And we have, we also in the policy require that the card state that it is for official purposes only. So that hopefully if they're, you know, they're not all this, whoever's trained that and everything would notice. Um, so there are, I think we have put a lot of thought into stock gaps and making sure, kind of making people be responsible and then forcing them to be responsible, you know? Um, the next policy that we've worked on with staff is the procurement policy and P card policies. Though they may not seem like it, but they surely owe him to know with the FOIA policy. Because, um, from working with clients on their FOIA request, a lot of times they are centered around procurement processes and transactions. And so that's why the people are going to be asking about contracting them into. Boy, if they're knows enough to know about that contract, you better believe that they have looked at your procurement code and they are going to know if you haven't done it right. Um, and that is, you know, stuff that we have dealt with. And so when you have these policies, you also have the FOIA policy there too. Um, the FOIA policy establishes a rate schedule. There are certain documents that the public has to have access to for free. Those are minutes and agendas, um, those they get at no cost. You know, if they are asking for receipts from March 24th, 2019, there is going to be a charge for the staff hours building and digging up those receipts. There's a charge for the copies, you know, someone shouldn't be able, there is some reperc, not repercussions, but there is some weight put on staff when they do these FOIA requests. So it's kind of nice to have a fiscal impact to the person requesting it. So they recognize, you know, all right, you know, there is a human putting in work to this FOIA request. It kind of would potentially slow down someone from saying, you know, please give me all receipts from every P card from the year 2017 to the year, you know, kind of can put some thought behind that. Um, however, district has nothing to hide. If they want stuff, give it to them, you know? That's where you're confident in your bylaws, your procurement policy, you're confident in the training that's been put in place. And you know that people are doing the right things. So you do want to say, take it, take it all. Um, but again, it goes back to just the timing.
It's also can, it also can be forgotten.
Or did the last time.
Suggesting rates and stuff.
Yeah. Um, the rates are kind of mandated. The hourly rate for staff has to be the lowest hourly rate of a person qualified to do the work. So not your lowest.
When you say longer, we just do it that's conforming and consistent with other agencies.
So, so this is, this is kind of the off the shelf policy. We probably have thirty or forty points that adopt this policy almost for a, except for, for the, for that lowest hour probably be number. Um, because depending on who your staff person, you apply that stat. But what Sarah kind of points to here and then what is behind this is, is no. FOIA policy is not required, um, because state laws specifically lays out what you're required to do when you receive FOIA. Any request received or adopted or considered public, it required to be turned over within statutory time. But what this is basically doing is to say, okay, when we receive FOIA request, we now have internal practice where it doesn't sit on, um, court's desk for five days and you missed the statutory deadline. You missed the deadline, even if you have an exemption, it's deemed, it's deemed a print. Um, or, you know, what responsibility is for that particular staff person. So that does get processed through. So it's identifying a check. Particularly FOIA users. And this is not to say, look, we're trying to receive some giant windfall of cash from the public at large. But there is a true cause associated with, with filling out.
With Lawrence, which, um, I guess what I'm trying to get to is like, let's just say, um, citizen Y and I ask Laquita to see. I, I can't just ask her to look at, oh, we're looking at credit card bills from this person. You can't just go and ask to do that, can you?
Absolutely.
Anybody, they can't do that.
Any person. But at the same time, we can't, it's a done.
Yeah.
But that's the reason that you have to have policies in place and say, okay, you don't just get this, you know, ad hoc. Like there is a, there's a, and you don't have to turn it up. You don't have to stop everything you're doing. The person comes in, inform them, tell them the people walked in the door. They come and knock on the door and say, hey, I want to see this. You can say, great, we have a policy on our website, put it all, come bring it back and we'll turn it around in statutory time. You know? The policy you're, if you have payment, if they put in your request, it's still a formal request. They didn't start the statutory timeline and you're still required to conform to it.
So long as it's in writing.
But, but, you know, if they, if they come and they ask for a thousand pages worth of P card receipts, well, you can charge them twenty cents a page to be able to do that. You can also go in, because there are things in there that are personally identifying, uh, information. If, if you pulled information on there within someone's credit card or their P card and it's got their social security number in there, absolutely have a duty to go in and redact that. Well, then staff has to take the time to go and redact it. That time of, of, of doing it, you can then go back at the, at their, at their hourly rate. And so you can say, okay.
Why does it have to be the lowest rate?
It's state law. It's, it's state law says you, you're, you can only request the reimbursement of the lowest qualified person at their hourly rate to be able to turn it over.
Right. We, we, to go and redact sixty documents, we can set that if no client has that takes.
Yes, absolutely. And so there, there, some of this is a little bit subjective, but it's. And so there are also requirements, um, that in, in the policy to go for a certain threshold, um, then they're required to put in a deposit.
As I said, you want to have some deposit.
And on top of that, you can go through the process because a lot of people will just about do FOIA requests. Or they'll use it to in run discovery process if you think to sue them or something. You can't stop that, but you can't stop it being used for personal solicitation or marketing solicitation. That's actually a recent amendment from FOIA. Um, but we can talk about that actually as a next kind of following point of, of this FOIA policy. But we wanted, or the FOIA discussion, because outside of the record side, FOIA kind of has two practical purposes. You got the production of public records, which are generally, the general will come as if it's produced publicly unless it's come from your lawyer or something that's otherwise protected from economic development platform or proprietary information from a vendor. It's going to be public record, you got to turn it over when you address it. And then also as the follow on, meeting, that's kind of the next part of, of this discussion that we're going to have. So what I'll say is, we've got about fifteen more minutes in our allocated time. I could burn through that real quick, or if y'all want to take a break. I know we've thrown a ton at you so far. Uh, we can burn through it. If actually y'all just want to say just keep moving through, we'll do that.
Yeah, do it. Five minutes.
And I'll turn it over to Lawrence for this part.
So like I said, we're, we've touched on policies of all the, none of these policies are written in stone at this point. Everything is a working draft. But the goal was to come out of this discussion today, give you some food for thought and say, okay, you know, there are really some, there's, in addition to the data, there's actually some meat here and we can make some decisions on it. So, um, and we kind of roll to a close today. There's nothing like talking through FOIA or really, you know, put an end cap on discussion for a board retreat. And so as I actually alluded to a second ago, um, public records, we're not going to really dig into that too, too in depth. We read the policy, it's pretty straightforward about what we do. Um, you know, we, we at least now have a solicitation form. I would say put it on your website and give people the opportunity to come in and make a request and be working on it. But what we're going to talk about a little bit more is the idea of conducting a public meeting. We kind of hit on all these record, uh, types of discussions, uh, in policy discussion. Sarah's talked about it. Um, so these are kind of all of our best practices. All of these best practices are incorporated into the terms of FOIA policy that, that it's indoor. Okay. So FOIA is probably the most outside of HR matters or, or, you know, churned verse up. It is the most litigated section of local government law, this generally. And the reason is, is because the public at large has a right to know what's being, what's, what's going on, what's. Had ten or fifteen cases in the last ten years on FOIA specific issues. Fortunately or unfortunately, the city of Columbia has been the lead player in a lot of those. Um, and, and it's, they've made a lot of law. And as a result of that, the legislature got mad enough, and even though their subjects were FOIA, they made some very significant changes to FOIA statute in 2017, particularly around the idea of how public meetings are all for them. So the old rule used to be you adopted your, your list of, of meetings for the year. You adopted those, the one with the public agenda, you didn't have to have a post of, of an agenda. Um, you had to have an agenda for a special call meeting, um, but you didn't have to have one for your regular meeting with the public meeting. Beware, that changed. You have to have an agenda for every single meeting that is otherwise implemented by a commission. And that agenda has to be put, put out publicly on your website. If you maintain one, and obviously you did twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting. You can't four hour window, absolutely showing them exigent circumstances. So what is an exigent circumstance? It's the idea that we're here in a pandemic today and you needed to call and, you know, give yourself the authorization, hold a private meeting or give yourself some special recruitment authorization. You could do that because we actually have the, the, the ability to declare an exigent circumstance. But generally speaking, you know, if you wake up on the morning of, of a meeting, you can't just tack something onto the agenda for approval, um, because that's going to violate FOIA. And as we've talked about earlier, FOIA has now become this kind of backdoor route to challenge the actions of local government. Because if you have a compliance with FOIA, it's an absolute ground student invalidating the action that you think. Uh, which is a, which is a real problem because if you, if the litigation ends on FOIA complaint, not only do they invalidate the action, but they also get recovered attorney, um, which can be a fairly significant practice. Problem that is also is it's kind of created an underground practice for lawyers who know that if they find a FOIA violation, it is sued you for the echo because they know they're going to recover, recover the attorney's. Um, so here, you know, we talked about what, what the agenda needs to look like. Um, for, for change to that agenda for executive, an essence, for example, required a, a super majority goes to do it in a determination.
What's that word again?
Exigent sort of, so basically an emergency circumstance that would otherwise apply for you to be able to make something. So meeting is defined as any, you know, this, this, this idea of convening in a forum for basically, uh, any decision to, to operate publicly. The most important thing that's probably happened in 2020 in local government is this, I think, is a throwaway line. FOIA was active in the early eighties, was the idea of meeting by means of corporate, uh, whether corporate or by means of electronic equipment. That is the authorization for every local government state that held their meetings electronically, um, over the last year. Absent that language, there would have been no authorization to hold electronic public meetings.
And we've also harmed the ability to meet electronically with some commissioners electronics, some in person. Um, hopefully we never have another pandemic like this again, but, you know, to give y'all that flexibility in the future going forward.
But, but that is it. Yeah. But that's a very important thing. In your bylaws, we explicitly stated this kind of hybrid authorization that then conforms to FOIA. But says, well, what is an electronic meeting for our persons? When this was passed, this was soon to be canceled. The internet wasn't obviously invented. So the idea of being able to meet via Zoom, um, you know, uh, or with Miss Donzetta being electronic and portioning you being physically, we've now specifically identified by the terms of your draft bylaw that a forum constitutes the representative membership, either appearing in person or electronically. So if we were to hold a public meeting today, you know, we obviously noticed it was actually put on your website. But Miss Donzetta would be considered a part of that forum because when you adopt this bylaws, electronic participation is explicitly deemed to be participating. Um, but, um, making sure that you have a forum, if you don't have a forum, you are not permitted to do public visit. You have to have a forum to be able to operate as an organization. So that's a, that's an issue, um, that, you know, we probably need to address as well. Because the constituted membership of this board, um, here the question is whether or not your, your five members is the correct number. You should really have sent them to vacancies, um, on board right now as a result of, um, um, not having those, otherwise come through by the term back expressed term from your name. Um, so if you're required to have a, a, a full operation, that means that really to do business, you need to have four members constitute for.
What can we do to help our legislation frame up on this? Because when you say we don't have control on the actual FOIA stuff, but like we have more members who are getting ready to go roll off.
Yeah. Um, and so I will say, so when a board member rolls off, they are deemed to, you know, unless they reside, they can stay on, on an holdover status until they're, they're. A fair number of pieces of legislative, uh, of cases out there say, especially when it comes to board governance, it's safe, could be your, your turn ends on, say it ended on January one. And you still showed up to the meeting that you're deemed in holdover status. If you took an action to approve a contract, that action is valid until your status of the board member was challenged. So if someone then stood, said, I'm going to be no longer authorized to serve on the board. And the court said, yeah, you're right, it's invalid. It's not going to invalidate the former action because you were serving a de facto valid capacity to take the action. But you got challenged and then you showed up to the next meeting, pulled a George's hands up. At that point, you were then invalid and that actually was not otherwise. All in? But, okay. Yeah. Exactly. Um, so that's, that's the, you know, other consideration. But getting back to your original point, the, the, this is, this is a real issue. I have, um, I have a number of clients that I'm. This is not, not to say that the oppositions are not very important, but unless you have a legislative delegation that's really interested in, in, in being a part of that discussion, you're kind of out of sight and out of mind. You know, my, my advice to most of my special purposes of clients, Laquita's already said this before, someone from this office, from this organization should be attending every single meeting of legislative delegation. And that's not to say you, but it's obviously you, you're a political appointment, you know, parent. If someone from the staff level organization needs to be at those legislative delegation meetings, because there is a public forum where they say, yeah, they're looking for people to show up and say stuff. If you're there and you've developed that rapport, that's the best way to do it, is for them to know who you are, know how you're operating. And, and we've had the conversation. It probably makes sense once a year where you show up in legislative delegation and say, hey, this is a, it's a maintenance office of everything that the recreation district has done the last year. We really appreciate your help. Oh, but by the way, I have, you know, two vacancies on my board and three members. We need to address that. And if they know who you are and you've been, you know, really quick about staying in front of them, that's where we go a long way towards addressing that issue. But otherwise they have carpool authorization and the governor's office will not take action to a point unless they have that recommendation. So you have this, there's an issue in the video, um, they're not, he's not going to just take independent authorization and act on it. It's got to come in the evaluation. All right. So executive session, this is probably the area that is the most abused. Um, I tell folks all the time, is this an authorization for an executive session? Just because something qualifies for executive session, just like some, just if something were to qualify as being disclosed under FOIA. At the end of the day, the decision as to whether or not to do something behind closed doors, it has to fall within one of the five authorized purposes. But you don't have to do that. At the end of the day, it was the board decision as to whether or not you want to do this closed door. I would always generally advise, if I'm providing legal advice on litigation, you don't do that in public. If you do that behind closed doors and the executive session quickly applies to you, but there's a punishment for violating. At the end of the day is an inherent function to be able to operate, rule authorization, commission as efficiently possible that you can. Those discussions happen in executive session, stay in there. But there's no criminal penalty if you go out and tell the newspaper what happened. Um, there is penalties associated with taking action while you're in executive session, um, because you're not, the public doesn't know what you're, what, what you're doing. Um, so that's exactly what we talked about before. The, um, termination contract with the former Richland County, uh, administrator was determined to have been approved at these valid leaders in the back of the basis in executive session. That then served as the groundstone in validating the contract. That's obviously a major problem when we're talking about spending more dollars. The key to putting an executive session on your agenda is trapped directly out of the, um, out of the, the, the chat. So it's for. So it's for input matters, basically anything associated with direct, you know, input on employee. If you have someone stealing money, you don't want it to be put in by name. You want that briefing and executive session. Negotiations on sale property, this doesn't give you the ability to sell property, but if you're talking about receiving legal advice, that's a pretty raw authorization. Basically, if your lawyer shows up and you get the authorization. Personnel, security devices, investigative review, that's obviously more of a local government. You have the local government section. And then economic development, which is probably not going to be one that y'all use very often. The important thing is in making those determinations, you have to announce with specificity the specific purpose. And the reason that this is pretty important to us, we represent a senior firm that's we were doing when we planted their new baseball stadium. There were challenge on the validity of extending a tip on a project, but also on the basis for why. We went into executive session and the executive session, as we did, the recital on the agenda says, executive session will receive legal advice, which is expressly out of statute. We got challenged on whether or not that was a sufficient disclosure as to the reasoning to go into executive session. And my partner at the time, when he was arguing this motion to the, or arguing the point of this report, said, court, you said that you have to plead the reason for going into executive session with particularity. Give us a right line test. What does particularity mean? And of course, they pointed on it. They validated or that they they told that our executive session disclosure was incorrect, but they didn't give us the right line test. So generally speaking, what we attempt to do now is add a little bit of additional authorization. So if you're going in executive session for an employment matter, don't just say employment matter. Say, we're representing, it's going to talk about the practical negotiations, talk about the
So if you'd said legal advice, discuss the stadium.
Correct. That was it. So it's a it's a technical nuance, but it's one of those that you can only do your business in a publicly held meeting. Your agenda then puts people on notice as to what you're doing in that meeting. And if you go into an executive session for a detailed purpose and someone challenges you, they're going to win. And they're going to recover their attorney's fees for that. Those are just kind of some suggestions based on kind of as a last, a last issue, just to generally touch on. This is the probably the most abused area. Remember, anything that you do in your capacity as a public commissioner, which is the reason that staff probably has our cell phones or email address. But if you have a group text chain, multiple members of this commission, the chat, where, you know, you're just getting information out there. If y'all start corresponding on that text chain or on that email, you're doing the public business. You're doing the public business behind a computer. And so as a result of that, that is that is not a chance meeting as a potential action to be able to to do public business. And so if you got FOIA, first of all, it may result in your, because you're transacting public business over your own cell phone. But court will say, yeah, you've got to turn over your entire personal cell phone. And then we determine whether or not we're going to react. And if you're determined to be doing public business behind closed doors over a cell phone, you didn't probably have that action otherwise valid. So no one has been abused on this yet. But I don't want y'all to be the group
If I send a text to everybody with your line light, is that FOIA?
That is a FOIABLE issue. Because remember, when FOIA was drafted, it was in the eighties. They didn't have the text message block. So it's any public record in what you're doing public business. So that then creates public records.
Would consider a meeting again?
A meeting in a forum of the constituent membership, whether by cordial means or by electronic equipment. We don't have electronic. A quorum is the simple majority of your membership.
So I can send the three
That's the way to enter it. Now, I have a few points to sum that.
I'm just saying if you're going to just do basic stuff.
No, I hundred percent agree. That technically is a non-loyal FOI. And so I've been in plenty of situations where we've had constituent city council meetings where you had to bring in two members and then 30 minutes later, you bring in two more members and 30 minutes later, you bring in another member. That does not violate, that may violate the spirit of FOIA. It is not violating.
Question. On my personal phone, if I text individually about a matter or a meeting, is that FOI? Or if I could all of them on one fit?
If you send them a text message in a capacity for public official business, it's not a public record. Where if she texts us about that's okay. Well, it's a matter of a caterer, if it's the catering, you know, center for a meeting, they're asking what you hold. I need to that's a FOIABLE. I mean, there really is no reason for you to be transactional business with staff on anything that would otherwise be unless you have a personal relationship outside of day to day operations. Everything that you do with staff or amongst yourselves is likely done as a result of your role as a commissioner or your member, your role as a staff.
So I guess that's my question too. So that includes me if I send a message to the three of those people in the back to leave the door open. That's a part of me directing them in sport.
Absolutely.
I do want to point something out here that seems like it might be getting lost a little bit. Anything from staff is FOIABLE. So Lakita, if you're texting Chair Laken, if you were to text Lakita, because Lakita's staff, even though it's just two of y'all, that's FOIABLE. The three people comes in when it's the commission in a meeting. But if you're so it's bizarre. So, you know, if you're texting, if it's just the two of you, if they're staff members, so FOIABLE. The two, three distinction, four distinction is when it's amongst yourselves as commissioners.
So the other piece of that is our attorney client privilege. Because this happens, I have a lot of clients that have done this too, especially from email. They'll put me in an email thing and then create, I'm sorry, to create an attorney client privilege, which means that it's then otherwise not subject to FOIA because it's protecting attorney client privilege and personal material. Please, please don't do that. But that is, I mean, that is what
We're trying to protect.
But that's what Sandy Cooper tried to argue on the fact that they were losing their lawyer. If you put me on your your text chain and then you also put on someone that is outside the scope of the organization, you lose attorney client privilege as a result of the third party that's fisher. That being said, I still say don't try to transact it over email via text on a chance meeting. The one that always comes up, oh, we have a Christmas party. Well, you're not, you're coming together, you're not coming together for the purpose of doing the public business. When you talk about it, you know, maybe people won't notice Christmas party. But if you all happen to have, you know, if Rob decides to throw a Christmas party and invites all commissioners and you show up, you're not planning to do public business. That's not a public meeting. But if you start, if you have someone there and you have some local government gathering sees the four of you talking and say, ah, they have to maybe talk about building a new racetrack. All of a sudden, then you tell them it's valid. It's it's a slippery slope. And the problem is we don't know how slippery it is.
So let's say we go to the national conference and we go out, we get some crabs, have a few beers. We're talking and
Now with your P card or those beers?
Yeah, look, they're out there wine now and they're Look, there are there's some great beer.
Yes, and as the
But I'm just saying, yeah, no, it's a it's a good question. The bigger question is how you create record. If there are no records produced. Well, we say usually when we go to these conferences, we will go out to dinner, of course, and we're hanging out, you know. And so at the end of the day, as long as you're not, I think, I think at some level, comments and that's also at the end of the day, as long as you're not meeting and then you come back and you all work out some grand scheme and you show up to the public meeting. And you both want to, you both have reopened some part or you've spent $500,000.
So you see a presentation at one of these things and say, hey, I really liked that presentation on the way that they use data to create a decision about how to program the park. I, that's us discussing something that we're learning about.
As opposed to, you know, at Cheltenham Road, we're going to build a park just like this. That's that's a like just All right. I think that's all I have.
We're just
One other question, Lawrence. On the cell, on the text and only getting this straight. So if I move to an office, um, RCRC cell phone and I'm texting them on their personal phone, how far back can they ask for my personal cell phone records if a FOIA comes about about something that happened today?
Far back as the record is online there.
They can what?
As far back as the record exists.
Okay. So it really doesn't matter. I can just keep using my social.
Absolutely. So, you know, there are folks that say, look, I don't want my personal cell phone to ever be intercepted as a public record. So I have lots of client security and work phone and official phone. And they are very intentional about transactive business only over their 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 work phone, what they're doing with work phone. And that's the document that you're otherwise going to receive. But you may, you know, the state newspaper reported when your nurse secretary resident, they FOIAed every member of the the board of trustees' personal cell phone. And they found they were transacting business about who was who the candidates were and then published that newspaper.
Do they focus only on the conversation that was specifically to the work or do they call like all of your stuff, everything?
They have actually that's that's the problem is as soon as you interject your personal business, then where is the line?
So I'm dealing.
But at the end of the day, that is the question. And so, you know, you want to be, you want to be really careful because you are inherently operating for the benefit of the public. You're spending public value. So like or not, we're going to get a very explicit authorization. And so the other thing, there was a case that came out last week, I think, against No, I think it was out of the upstate. I don't remember who the who the local government was. But it was about record retention and their, what's your policy on retaining records on it? This gets back to Miss Horn's question a minute ago. Is is what is responsibility for retaining records? State law says that you basically are supposed to maintain public records for at least seven years or you work through the Department of Archives and say how you archived public records. Well, they had a corrupted email server that that terminated all their public records and they got FOIAed and they couldn't produce it. At least the court had some common sense to say, well, it's not a violation if by, you know, by happenstance or, you know, some force majeure, you all saw the record, you don't have, you're not penalized. But there's a fine line there where if someone's being very intentional about erasing the text and you don't have a policy as to what the intention is, then it looks very arbitrary if you get, if you do it. You get FOIAed and they say, well, you know, we've not actually have a record of that. You need to make sure that we conform to the state requirements on record retention. But I would say it makes sense to have a policy in place for record retention. The last one I will point out on there, this Miss Horn, under the Rock versus Mount Placid case, put an executive session on every board agenda, no matter what you do. That is basically that in Rock, there was a whole bunch of litigation over some development agreements that were occurring down in Mount Placid. They had an executive session on there and even if you just put an executive session on your agenda for public on notice and you don't announce what particularity it's lighting as to what purposes, so long as you have announced that publicly, so it's recorded in the minutes, the reason that you're going in, you can then go into an executive session for whatever the purpose is. And then you can also take action coming out of executive session on that big ride. So long as you have a line item in your agenda that says action to be taken on matters discussed. So that's just something
Then you have to mend the agenda into the
Just authorize the 20, 24 hours in advance of the day. So if you have just a placeholder that says executive session on the agenda, then you come into the meeting and you announce the reason you're going in the executive session. The public is then put it in put on notice, the executive session could occur. And if you say you don't need it in the meeting, then you say, yeah, we don't need an executive session.
What about Like straw? Are you there's an issue that we're talking about?
You can take note action.
So straw, so straw will be
That is
So that's yes or no?
Lot of rules for being a public chair.
And the goal here was not to scare everyone today, but you know, if you haven't been through this before, there you just, you gotta, you gotta kind of know where the rubber meets.
This is very helpful, like finding out these issues and I really think that you got to do.
Yeah, I really like I really like that ideas and how you're going to make all of these different policies kind of meld, you know, so that one side contradicts the other. I think that's crucial.
That is certainly the goal is to make you a streamlined vision, to have documentation behind while you're doing. And that helps you set.
Policy, absolutely. The G's policy would stop to be amended, but you you have to We have to prove all these. If there's anything else that
Oh, yes. It can go backwards, kind of like last year. What we've been doing is bringing the policy to every board meeting. Because we wanted to eventually get to the point where we had a retreat and we worked through all the policies, correct? To be very honest with you, there's just a lot of outdated things that we are taking a priority list and our human resource policy, our first movement policy and reports where Lawrence has identified some deficiencies in your areas that we need to fill the gaps procurement and FOIA and this push of that all. So it's an ongoing process.
And I would say outside the ones that we've identified, procurement, FOIA are probably the two that that absolutely need to be addressed. P card, if you're going to implement it, absolutely need to be addressed. And then the following, HR is an absolute
I want to commend Lakita and her staff on a job well done with these issues. With Lakita coming in, we had the concerns of everything we just talked about. I think the train is on the track. We're heading in the right direction. Keep up the good work. We need to make a change, let's make a change because we asked for, and every time we do a culture change, it's a whole lot of things we need to go into and also convincing staff to get on board, ride the train in the right direction for doing things wrong for so long. And we can't punish them for it, but we need to get them on track to move forward and I commend you.
Have an awesome team. Here it has been working diligently. Thank you again, Lawrence. For you and your team, for your input and you as a board, you have been very supportive. I know we don't always agree, but this is why we grow. In order to grow, you got to get a little uncomfortable. And we've been uncomfortable, but we are growing. So thank you again, Lawrence. I know that we do have another session. I know that Chair Lepina does have to leave, so if we can switch, maybe take a five minute break and get back to go ahead and get set up. Again, we can get around with Paul's Lawrence and
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, Laura, if there, Rob asks if I can get CLE credit.
I thought it was a great question.
Yeah, we can submit, we can submit the material.
So we will go into break now, if we can go into pause or jam.
Hurry, we are now about to go into our second half of the retreat. I would like to introduce to you Mr. Raffi Christman, who is our recreation superintendent. Matthew joined us in March, was it March of 2020, right? May, so you have another year yet, but he joins us from the state of Arizona. I'm going to introduce him now. But today I wanted to give this presentation, I have to give this presentation because we feel that as we look at our strategic goals in accounting, we have an opportunity to really take advantage of sports tourism. We've identified some great opportunities currently and we want to share with the board some of our future thoughts when you meet us into capital improvement, planning and budgeting. And so with that, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Christman.
Um, so with that, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Christman.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Uh, pleasure. Thank you. I felt for you to talk about sports tourism. Uh, like you just said, I'm, I came from Arizona. I worked there for seven years. Um, I've been in parks and recreation for twelve years. Um, I started my career in the city of St. Louis. Um, as a part-time staff, worked my way up and then I started, uh, my first full-time staff, uh, first full-time job was, uh, in, uh, Decatur, Illinois, um, and then I moved out to Arizona. So I'm, I'm just gonna get into sports tourism, uh, great opportunity for person counting to get into. Um, it's something that we're starting to get into a little bit right now. And at the end of the presentation, I talk about what we're bringing, uh, tournament-wise to us. So the first thing about sports tourism is that the definition of it. Sports tourism is traveling in order to observe or participate in a sporting event. The sporting event has to be the primary reason of travel in order to be considered sports tourism. Because if the sport doesn't revolve around it, that's just tourism. It's not sports tourism. And then, um, individuals are attending, uh, outside their area and that's increased. A hundred and eighty-nine people traveled for sporting events since twenty nineteen, uh, resulting in a hundred and three point three billion dollars of economic impact of sports, uh, economy. So there's three types of, uh, sports tourism. Event based sports tourism, um, this is based off of individuals who are trapped. The fanatics with our panel. Uh, participatory, uh, so if I go and do a triathlon, I'm the person, I'm a sports tourist because I'm going to participate. Then there's, uh, celebratory to sports tour. That's the people that are going to the hall of fame, um, museums, every, uh, mo- most of them are pro football teams. They have their own hall of fame. They have their own museum, but they're bringing in tourists that way. So that's where there's three different kinds of sports tourism. The benefits of sports tourism. Bringing in money to the community. That could be hotels, it could be restaurants, it could be gas stations, uh, like if we charge admission to get into that tournament, uh, concessions, uh, anything associated with, uh, that event is good for the community because you're bringing in money from the outside to your community. Then, uh, it leads to other tourism. So when people come to your sporting event, uh, they may come to R C R C. It might drive their numbers and help in their tourism dollars as well. Because when people, they might be at the tournament for two, three, four hours, then they have the downtime in the evening. So they might look at doing something else with their family and friends. And then it could be, if, another reason is it makes you a great P R. So if you provide a great experience for the outside people, they're gonna talk with their friends, family about their experience that they had at your facility or complex or whatever, um, facility they have, uh, that you're having their tournament at. And then, um, it builds a great community relationship. So you're gonna have sponsorship with local businesses. You're also gonna have, uh, local partnerships. Yes, we, uh, currently already have, um, field, uh, user agreements with some of our local leagues, but it could be that there's another entity that we're not familiar with and they come to us as well. So it, it helps build those relationships that we might not already have. And then, um, we don't know, currently know about. And including an experience. So we're looking at sports tourism, generate experience among the individuals and develops a positive image for the community. When individuals are participating in sporting events on a, on a continuous basis, they enhance their experience. So when you're deciding on what, um, tournament you're gonna go to, the experience is what is driving that. Because there's a lot of tournaments. So as a club team, uh, I get to decide where I go because if I had a positive experience, I'm gonna make sure that I go back to that tournament. So that's what the main focus is, is to give that experience the best that we can for the outside people because we would always want them to come back to us. So I'm gonna go through a couple of venues that are in, uh, South Carolina. Uh, Rock Hill Sports, um, and Events Center. It's a hundred and seventy thousand square foot facility. They have a championship court that seats twelve hundred people. Uh, they have. Spectator areas. And then, uh, during the pandemic, they generated sixty million of economic impact um, for that. So we, um, even in a certain times that are going on now, there's still sports tourism happening and that's something to say too. This one facility in Rock Hill during the pandemic, there was just one economic impact, correct?
Impact.
Yeah, not, not revenue. Yeah, not revenue. It's, I can understand that.
And they hosted during this pandemic. We had a state, yes, we had a state group of us from different departments and commission that communicated as we were going through COVID nineteen. And Rock Hill was the first to say, we have an enterprise fund associated with this. We have to continue to move forward. And they were able to successfully do it without, um, expanding or having additional cases of COVID. So I need one.
And then the second, uh, venue is the Myrtle Beach Sports Center. It's a hundred thousand square foot facility. It has eight basketball courts, sixteen volleyball courts, it's actually standing in spectator area. Uh, we couldn't, I couldn't find, uh, their numbers, uh, if they posted that some of that, uh, what their economic impact was during, uh, pandemic as well. And these are all current photos of those facilities. It's not, it's not open. And then, uh, look, North Myrtle Beach Park Game Sports Complex. This is a little bit different. So the first two were just indoor components. This is certainly outdoor component. So this is six baseball and softball fields, eight multi-use fields, supports soccer, football, um, lacrosse, uh, multi-use, uh, field. They have eight batting tub, uh, tunnels. They have a twenty-five acre lake, uh, so if they wanna finish, if they wanna have, uh, skiing events, water sports, uh, they have that capability to do that there as well. They have a amphitheater and then around the complex, biking trails along with three playgrounds. So it's not just a sports complex. They also have park, um, aspects as well. So now I'm gonna talk about economic impact. So we, I was working with, uh, Synergy Sports Global to come up with a high level. Uh, if we built a forty million dollar, uh, facility that had indoor and outdoor components, what that economic impact would look like. So there's three phases to building a forty million dollar complex. The first is a construction phase. From the numbers that, um, Jason with, uh, Synergy Sports Global came up with, seventy million of dollars of economic impact would happen just in the construction phase alone. So that is consultants, it's design, it's everything associated with, um, the construction phase of that project. So four hundred and fifty jobs would be created or supported. So if we had a subcontractor come in, there's this creating a new job because that subcontractor is already there. So the four hundred and fifty, uh, jobs were created or supported. And then seven point seven million dollars would be generated in tax revenue for that, just that one phase. Then when we go to daily operations, this is bothering, um, like our rent leads, um, people coming into the facility, if we had a business, uh, component, if we had a track, uh, daily rentals, all that kind of, um, and it started with one year going through five years. It's, it's an annual progression that way. So it would be fifty-nine million of economic impact that's indirect and direct, uh, with the facility as well. So two hundred and seventy-seven jobs would be created or supported in that. And then five point three million, uh, would be generated tax, uh, revenue as well. So with the, uh, tur- tournaments and events, this is based off of having in year one, it would be a hundred and forty events, moving to two hundred and twenty events by year five. Forty thousand to a hundred and eighty-five thousand visitors to that facility. And then that would result in a, a, a thirty thousand to forty thousand root, uh, hotel night um, in that year five. So this is twenty-seven million of economic impact would be generated in year one and moving towards year five as well. Two hundred and forty thousand would be created or supported with this, uh, economic impact. And then three million would be generated in tax revenue from that as well. So this is a very high level, um, analysis, uh, because obviously there's other components. If you start tweaking what kind of facility you want, if you want aquatics, then that it skews it out a little bit, but this is a high level that had in, in north, uh, sport, basketball, volleyball, along with, uh, football, uh, soccer and lacrosse as well. So I'm gonna talk about the upcoming tournaments that we're already bringing to R C R C. So the very first one is the A U basketball. They're bringing their super regional here, March twelfth through the fourteenth. We're using four parks. Uh, we're using Blackwood, Meadow Lake, March Springs and Polo Road. The reason for that is we don't have a multi-court facility, so we have to spread it out. And they were okay, they came down, looked at the facilities and they were okay with us breaking it out that way. Uh, we're also bringing in a A U Taekwon Dome, uh, tournament, uh, competition on March thirteenth at Kellye Park. And then we, we, um, have gotten approval from the Braves. Uh, we're gonna do the Braves Country Battle, April sixteenth to the eighteenth at Kelly Mill. And then if it spills over, um, depending on how many teams they have, we're gonna use our spring park as well um, for that because it could be that they have forty teams. If we have forty teams, uh, we could do it just at Kelly Mill, but if we get sixty teams, we have to have both facilities up, up and running. And with this agreement, uh, we were helping, uh, we got help with, uh, experienced Columbia. Uh, city of Columbia as well. And Scott Powers, uh, we actually got a, a proposal and Braves agreed to it, uh, for three years. So they're coming back for three years now. It's not just a one time. And what, uh, is good about the Braves is they're looking to invest in the community as well. So they have, um, an arm that is, uh, the charitable arm. So they could look at doing, uh, field renovations. It could be that they build us a new field. It's all what our needs are and what fits into their budget as well. So that's a very good, uh, partnership that we were able to secure as well. So, and then that concludes the overview of, uh, the sports tourism. So if you guys have any questions, open up.
And all the tournaments that you saw, they are going to be accountable to our COVID nineteen restrictions. So there will be limited spectators and all the things that we had in place for our current leads, uh, they have.
Can you ask me a question? Sure, if I did, I, I think I answered. You can expand upon it. She just said, where is this project? Where is money coming from? I responded, if you tell me if I'm off base, I think it's a high level discussion to say, if you'd like to pursue this in the future. But she won't expand upon that.
Um, exactly what you shared. The reason that we brought this to you today is because for your retreat, of course, we celebrate the accomplishments that we've been able to have over the last year or so. But we also identify where are we going for the next three to five to ten years. Uh, this is a project that has been brought to us, of course, by some individuals in private sector and also some foundations. And we're subject matter experts. So we feel that if this is a project that is going to come to our county, we would like to take the lead in those discussions and identify the possibilities and opportunities. So that is the purpose of today is to do high level, you know, what is sports tourism? What are we currently doing? And a, a more sustainable operating, um, and capital budgeting in the future. We feel this is a good opportunity for me recruiting some points to scratch the surface of something that we haven't.
So just kind of, the discussion's almost kind of kind of goes with capital improvements also as well. So it's kind of like, I mean, on Monday night, we get together again because, you know, we get a lot of conversation, you know, Steve and I have traveled all over for soccer, um, different parks and obviously in Rock Hill, they, they got a massive soccer park too. On top of that stuff that you showed. So I've seen what the tourism does, but, or I think you all have. You're in. So kind of goes into the conversation about tennis facilities, which can become a tourism dollar type situation, but how do we improve them, blah, 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 and think. Um, we should probably just have open forum about that on Monday.
Definitely. And what you will receive on Monday will be an overview. The brain will be sharing with you, uh, where we are, what we've identified the priorities, but we're not asking for a vote or anything for capital improvement or operating. But we want to come back and do a work session to really get into our capital improvement needs as a county. We all know that it was great to get the fifty million dollar bond that was previously issued, but there's still several facilities that were never addressed. And in addition, there are new opportunities that we feel will be beneficial to the overall county. So this is the year for that discussion. We are gonna be looking at our comprehensive tenure plan as well. And the county is working on their tenure comprehensive plan. So timing is, is everything. And I think that it's important if you, if you stay ready, you don't have to get ready. So that's what we're trying to do is to stay ready, have our plans so that when there are opportunities for funding, grants and partnerships, we have a plan that we can.
I think one of the things that, when I look at this, I think about facilities that have a lot of use during the day, during the week, but are multi-passing that you can now bring any day you think. I don't want us to have facilities where it's like, they're just forty-eight, you just, I want us to have things that people are using twenty-four seven. And yeah, you become very, and traveling sports becomes a very part of that, but also incorporating like, you know, build a big facility.
Definitely. Like Alan's approach to it so that it is not only utilized for sports tourism, but still feeds into the community by which we serve, which has strengthened us in the long term, working with the school system. Uh, as we talked about, the aquatics, we're embarking upon an aquatic feasibility study. You're gonna understand aquatics in the entire county um, in our outline areas. So do we need to continue going after outdoor pools? Or should we be looking at incorporating an indoor facility, um, as a part of the overall campus where we can actually have swim teams and bring a new culture here in, in South Carolina.
Well, yeah, I, I compliment you guys on the foundation. Uh, having coached in Richmond County for a number of years, uh, and looking at tournaments that's coming in and we, it's caring funding that, uh, that's a, that's a good start. Also, I was at, uh, Manchester Park on last Saturday and, um, doing some baseball with some kids. It was another group out there utilizing the field and I think if coaches are coming in, charging kids money, then we should be able to recruit some.
We have been having problems with it. I'll be honest with you. Not only the outdoors, we found it happening when we opened up the facilities for families to come in. So we are trying to stay ahead, but thank you. When you see that, feel free, send me a text message. And I'll, um, make sure that we communicate with them because we have found that we've had independent contractors that are, um, doing coaching and receiving payments at our facility. So if you're seeing that, please share with us because we do think that it's is our facility. But if you're recruiting a cost of other, there should be a balanced approach.
Then with one, what, what you're saying is, um, with the consultant, they were looking at not pricing us out either. So when we charge a certain amount for our, our facility now, when we build a new facility, it's not gonna be that it's a hundred dollars an hour to rent it because then we're competing against ourselves and that just doesn't make sense. So the consultant understands that because it's all one entity. So we're not gonna price ourselves out, but we also want everybody to utilize it. We can have one location where we have our rep basketball league as one location for that. Or we start, uh, indoor volleyball league as one location. And then we can finger to the A U club teams at the park site, but we have one cycle hub for all sports to be at for the youth board recreation. I do coach these, not lock in those kids out there can't pay for a, for a, for a.
It's definitely been, um, a trend, a changing dynamic over the last fifteen, twenty years. Um, the relationships with competitive sports and select sports, including sports. So what we're trying to do is try to be the hub for all sports in our county and work with those groups without, um, like you said, costing out, trying to have citizens that can't afford those.
I think we really have to try to get this kind of stuff rolling as possible, whether by laws or the policies or stuff like this. Like I'm tired of talking about it, but I also want to see it.
Yes, I have a list over here that says action items that I would be bringing you at the end, but yes, I totally agree. But yes, I totally agree, like it's important that we share.
Absolutely.
And give you the information so that you all can make informed decisions on the things that we're doing. But thank you, Matthew. Uh, did any other questions for Matthew? All right, so um I know that our chair will be stepping out and we will continue to move forward our next presentation, which will close. And we will have our public information officer, Mrs. Jay Russell. She's going to close us out with all that good news of, you know, what have we done over the last year? You know, how have we continued to serve the citizens at a high level? And I'm pleased to say that we have. Um, we truly appreciate you all as board members for your support in our endeavors. But I need to shout out my staff. I have an awesome team of professionals and we have metamorphosed over the last um almost three years. I can't believe it's going to be three years this year. And a lot of things people don't see in the public, but I'd like to say publicly that this team rocks and they give 150%. And what you see here today and what you will hear is touches every part of our agency. And you'll get to really uh see what your team is doing. So uh Jamie, go to read. All right, so this is the annual report and this annual report will also be on our website. But there will be printed copies, there will be the electronic and uh also a written copy, a printed copy to the delegation. I want to follow what Lawrence was saying. I think that we need to share with them what it is that we've accomplished. And I'll get our chair to write a nice letter and then they'll be able to see where we are. And I think that will help us uh move forward with helping them make some decisions. I have started attending the county council meetings prior to the the event. Uh, myself or Tamika and sometimes even Randy will go because instead of just showing up when we want money, we wanted them to see that we are a part. I do fail on attending the legislation meetings. Uh, of course, I need to wait, I'm excited. I have an awesome deputy in Tamika. I don't have to even give it a second thought, I know it's going to be done. And she can continue to handle a lot of our day to day. But I do do what you all want me here to do is build stronger relationships and build stakeholder partnerships with our community. So I want to again publicly thank my awesome deputy who keeps it rolling for me. I truly appreciate her and um she made sure that today was great with Jamie. So Jamie, um, yeah, thank you and all your team for turning the annual report in.
Good afternoon to the board. I am tasked with giving you our 2020 fiscal year annual report. And so we have done, have been able to do some great things amid COVID nineteen, which is what I want to highlight. I'm already getting used to numbers in our October meeting from the annual report. But I want to talk about some of the things we were able to get accomplished. First of all, in our fiscal year 2020, uh, we were able to create a team that is creative, diverse, innovative and experienced. And because we have such a great leadership team, we are now trying to make sure that our staff mim- mimics the leadership that we have. And as a result of that, you'll find that we are parts and wrecked. This is one of the uh brackets that we use as we celebrated National Park and Recreation Month, where we were able to take comments from different members of our staff and use it on our social media. And so the way that we're able to mirror this great leadership team that we have, we have a path now that you all have adopted with our vision, our mission and our strategic plan. And with that vision, we are not just trying to be the state leader. We are trying to be a national leader where we are providing evidence-based recreational programming, safe and accessible facilities and customer service excellence. And we do that because we're dedicated to enriching lives and connecting communities through diverse recreational opportunities. And though we have this path, that path is governed by a compass. And that compass is our core values. Our core values are accountability, responsibility, again, customer service excellence, teamwork and balance, which you can see, even though we've been working all week, our team is still here today. Integrity and honesty, open and effective communication, nurturing compassion and empathy. Just in the book, we take action at RCRC. And so with our agency, we have just a little bit over 968 acres of land. With of course, our administrative building and a plethora of buildings and sports complexes in our inventory. And it's broken down into four divisions, administration, property management, recreation and community relations. And of course, here with our strategic plan on this path, we have several action items. And I think this box is going to do an activity about that a little bit later on at another time. Um, that so that those can be prioritized based upon what our board has as their desire. And so as we're developing our team, one of the most important things is professional development. And that has been accomplished this year with training and educational opportunities, not only externally but internally as well. We have had all of our staff to complete a diversity and inclusive training, which is a very important topic, especially now in our entire staff was able to complete that training. We've also had first aid and CPR and AED training, as well as ocean safety training uh in our in in our PA premier member webinar series, as well as the true colors training, which deals with conflict navigation. And of course, we are a great team, but there are some times when conflicts do arise. And so we have had several trainings and not even just um with external training, but also internal. And as a part of our core values, we are making sure that our staff is more accountable. And our finance department, as well as our human resources department, have been working to increase accountability. Where we have upgraded our system with timekeeping, it is now electronic timekeeping. And also our asset purchases and program data collection is now electronic as well. And I'm going to show you some of the figures and numbers that we're able to produce now because our systems have been upgraded. Uh, equipment has been replaced and upgraded, which has allowed us to streamline our communication processes and monitor productivity. In our property management department, we now have a system where we are able to track our work orders, how long it takes our repairmen to complete those orders. And so our park superintendent is able to prioritize and based on the performance of our repairing to see where we need to make some additional training if we are not able to complete those in a timely fashion. Also, we're very excited about our partnerships, sponsorships and grants. One of our biggest uh contribution this year has been with T-Mobile. They offer, have given us and we have received it in cash, that check for $20,000. And so, uh, uh, Ms. Lisa Lewis-Etchison has been working very hard. But we've also been able to centralize being able to track when our sponsorships and our partnerships and our grants are done. And so we did a great uh event with S E TV, as well as we have been working with Hardest Hope because we understand our community, some of our community is suffering through some and so we want to be there to help them. Health, Healthy Blue has been phenomenal. And also Humana has been working with us because we were able to complete our senior games in a COVID safe way, which was very, very good. Office Depot and look, we we are not uh, we don't discriminate. We went to Office Depot and Staples. So even though they may be competitors, we'll take it wherever we can get it. So both of them were able to uh donate not only in-kind service, but also financial donations, Home Depot and Lowe's. And they are working with us with our after-school program, classroom. Because one of the things we found is that we uh, some of our buildings are not as invited. And so we're trying to make sure that our buildings, even though we don't have a lot of money to make a whole lot of renovations, we're going to do some cosmetic things. And these companies have seen the need for that and have offered uh supplies to us as well as monetary donations. Hot 103.9, Jimmy John's, Rare Booster Sports Bar and Grill, Tri-County Electric Cooperative and USDA. So we're very excited about all the partnerships. Kind donations, uh, we've had about $26,000 that we have received. Uh, in monetary, $23,000, it's a little bit higher than that. In our grants, a minimum of $13,000 and in our partnerships, about $10,000. So we're really, really excited about the things that we are able to do here at RCRC. I told you that we upgraded our systems and so with that, we were able to see in fiscal year 2020, which runs from July 1st, 2019 until June 30th, 2020, that we had 56,107 citizens scan into our buildings in order to participate in our activities. Now that is not including um any community leagues. These are just members of the community that have come in and scanned their memberships into our building, which our memberships currently now are free. And so that's 56,000 of the over 410,000 citizens. So I think we're doing pretty well. And in our private rental reservations, we've had 29,166 hours booked of private rentals. Now that is, of course, part of that was COVID, but the majority of that was prior to COVID. So we're really excited about the participation and the fact that we're able to track who's coming into our buildings. And I'm so glad that the vision was there for that because now it's very important that we are in the middle of a panic. We talked about previously about our core uh programming requirements, uh, programming categories that we make sure that all of our programs fall under one of these categories. And I stated before that we we've given you some numbers in a previous meeting. But I also want to talk a little bit about what we've been doing in COVID in those areas of programming. Most importantly, our human resource department and our executive team were making sure that we could return back to work in COVID operations and making sure that that was safe and secure. So our HR department did a phenomenal job helping to make sure that we had all of the things in in place so that our our employees employees were a little fearful, but they did everything they could, even with implementing some different sessions from EAP, which helps us to manage the stress during this time of COVID. Also, our IT department was making sure that we had the right equipment and that we could safely and securely connect to the agency from home so that none of our data would be compromised. And then also while we were out, we were learning how we can do better at our performance management while we were at home and implementing this tool that has been put in place even amid COVID. So your team has been working. Also, our community outreach uh department has worked to do six rectigo events where over 500 children were served. And we were also able to coordinate with the USDA partner where they also received a meal and mask again during COVID. We participated in a national night out, even though that date was pushed out from August to October, but we still were able to serve 250 children with meal. At same use we were able to execute a day of caring where we served over 200 children in a drive-through experience for a holiday toy giveaway. And we also had our breakfast with Santa. If you haven't seen our uh pictures online, you'll notice that Santa was in a snow load. So even he was safe during COVID nineteen. Our senior resources, we we saw that they had a need because they had low supplies. And so again, in community outreach, uh, over 750 pounds of supplies and toiletries and things were filled. We called it the fill the box initiative. Our employees, as well as the public, were able to contribute to make sure that our seniors were taken care of. We also did Hardest Hope uh donation collection and that this year was in connection with famously hot. So everyone that bought in some donations, we also were able to give them a bag of goodies for the for New Year's Eve celebration where they could virtually connect and uh still be able to party even though they could not be in in one space. And as a result of the fees that were paid from the citizens, there was a hundred dollar donation that was taken from those proceeds as a part of that Memorial Day to give back to Hardest Hope. So we're definitely concerned about the community. Our national night out participation, uh, of course, again, we talked about those 250 kids. Now, I I told you before, our seniors are so important to us because when we looked at the numbers, one of our, one of our facilities is the one we're in right now. We see so many seniors that we decided to do a senior drive-through event and they were elated because they have been home for months and have not been, had not been able to get out. And so amid COVID, we were able to do those drive-throughs and just have the staff stand down and wait to them and give them some things they could use in COVID nineteen. There were six back to school batches. We've done outdoor recreation, our our outdoor, our adult and youth sports were still in play, as well as our community leagues. And when we first began uh COVID, uh, uh, we actually had from our health and wellness department where we did online and social media and we got a great response for that. And again, I already stated that we had uh two virtual five K walks. And I told you we're innovative because you can see that our seniors weren't ins, they weren't comfortable inside. So we took them outside to those tennis courts so they could still get to their low-impact exercise. During COVID, I do want to highlight that in our fall youth soccer program, even though our numbers were a little down, we still had 200 participants. And I want to highlight that because that means that they trusted us to bring their children to us. Uh, we didn't make them register, but they chose to register. And so we were able to serve 200 participants. Our fall adult kickball, which is 60 participants, our fall softball was 50, and winter basketball, 400 participants. Again, they still trust RCRC. And our tennis, 40 participants. And I I do want to go back to that, one of our major activities because here we have 6,000 in COVID. I told you the original number was 59,000. But in in amid COVID, we had 6,500 that has scanned into our buildings since July 1st, 2020 until the end of the year, December 31st. And our senior residents at Parkland, it's 10% of our our previous patrons that are still visiting our facilities. At the beginning of COVID, one of the innovative ideas was to do pool reservations. And as a result of that, 6,576 citizens, 35% of those visited our pool. So even though we were all a little bit on the edge of COVID, we still understand the importance of recreation and took those chances. Even though our hours were 29,000 in the fiscal year amid COVID, we've been at 10,429 hours of our rentals. And we have been able to have three sites where over 1,000 hours of COVID nineteen testing has been done at our facilities. And this picture here highlights our senior games, which again, they are outside of their cars, still ready to exercise, making sure that we have the COVID measures in place and they they seem pretty excited. This is our rectigo event. So we took um recreation equipment and gave it out to the children because they couldn't get to us. This is also serving them their meals. And this was actually at our administrative building, which we had a huge line of people. And this is one of our back to school batches where the Richmond County Sheriff's Department has been such a committed partner to RCRC. And this is one of our sponsors, S E TV, which was also giving out books and other paraphernalia to our children through our drive-through. So we've been pretty, pretty busy amid COVID. And we are going to continue to hope that you will trust RCRC to climb the stairs and move to a higher vision and higher heights. Thank you so much.
So members of the board, um, that concludes our presentations today um to you. Uh, we are prepared for Monday, looking forward to Brandy along with myself and Garian. So that we present us to bring to you your operating budget with various scenarios for consideration, as well as that discussion with capital improvement plan, budget and our future. We are excited and I hope that you are as well. And now we will stop talking, I'll stop talking so that we can share anything that you would like to receive additional information online or if there are any comments. And then I'm not sure, I think that we do have our vice chair who is online as well. So I will be quiet and we can start with our vice chair, if that works for you all. All right, vice chair, Ms. Avzada Lindsay. Does that even under you?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, me.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I enjoyed the session and thank you very much for all the participants. And I'm looking forward to hearing you Monday.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Now, Commissioner, Ms. Lisa High.
Um, same comments. It was a great session, enjoyed it, very informative. Um, looking forward to Monday.
Commissioner Clark.
Uh, again, I compliment you guys again, uh, defeated your team, uh, in a job well done. I had an opportunity uh last weekend to go see the uh recreation basketball. The process and the staff allowed me to come in, got my temperature checked, to watch them spray down in between games. Uh, I spoke with staff. spray down and be playing games, uh, spoke with staff. They were comfortable, um, early on, they, they had some issues with, uh, an outbreak, but they, they handled that and got it documented, got the kids separated. It wasn't a big, any big outbreak, but I was impressed with your knowledge and the step taken if something wasn't happening, uh, to keep not only the staff safe, but the public safe as well, especially the kids. I spoke with the, um, referee who's calling the game. He felt comfortable, he's been calling games since, uh, the league started. Just impressed, um, I'd say we have to find some sense of normalcy during this period of time and also ensure the staff safety and, uh, safety of the public as well. Great job.
Thank you, sir. Coach B.
Uh, excellent presentation. I think it speaks to kind of team and culture that you all are building together. And, uh, that's, that's really important because the places this agency was on with a lot of our board members who brought on was not in a good place. And it's just, uh, just looking at the policies that you have to work on, that, um, that word around, um, you can see why there were issues in the past and how much work you guys have done already to correct that. Uh, I wish people could see more information like, um, all the stuff that you guys have done with Hardest Hope and, you know, people were more aware of all of the work that you guys are doing. Uh, I think, you know, the presentation that I was giving was phenomenal for showing that. And I just, I just really wish people knew more of what a great job we're doing, that , uh, once you guys really just keep working hard at what we're doing because, uh, when we look at our mission, you know, connecting people, I think that's what the pandemic has taught us that how much, how important it is to connect in a healthy way, not in unhealthy way, but in a healthy way. I think that is awesome that that's in our mission and we need to protect our mission, our vision of using data and, um, making sure that we're really connecting people in our community. Over 56,000 of our homeowners residents are using it, over 180 people, where the 180 people are using our stuff, that's, that's phenomenal. We just got to keep going. Is that, that, that's what's going to bring our health back. Okay, well, keep going, please.
Well, thank you all again. And again, thank you to all the staff, the people behind the scenes, the guys behind the camera, the people that don't get to see, as well as all of the team that's here today from community relations and recreation. We believe in what we do. Thank you.